Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Wednesday, November 8th Board of Education meeting. Are we in compliance with open meeting law notifications?
Yes, we are.
Wonderful. Please call the roll.
Do it. Here.
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 Wonderful. And now I'd like to invite two students from Carl Trager Elementary, Anna Ellsberg and Ayesha Kinley, to come right up here and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very, very much. Really appreciate you being here, taking time from your busy school schedule. And if you would like to stay for the meeting, you're more than welcome. I like that. You have some pressing things that you can do. Thank you very much. We've already had a meeting.
And now I would like to welcome Carl Trager Elementary School Principal Brenna Garrison-Bruden to the table to give us some updates on Carl Trager.
Good evening. My name is Brenna Garrison-Bruden, and I am the proud principal here at Carl Trager Elementary. And I'm pleased to have the opportunity to talk to you this evening about some of the great things happening at Trager. First off, I want to say our teachers have truly embraced the rapid cycles of improvement process and are working hard to provide differentiated instruction to support targeted foundational skills. Because of their hard work, we are seeing improvements in student outcomes. Since 2015, each year we engage in a school-wide read called "One Book, One Community." We spell it C-O-M-M-U-N-I capital T-E, and that stands for Trager Elementary. Every family receives a copy of the selected title, and we have a school-wide shared reading experience. Staff record readings so families can listen and follow along or read in whatever manner works best for them. This week, we're launching our new title. It's called "The Ice Cream Machine," and it's a series of six short stories that we'll be reading over the next six months. And then we'll have some culminating activities in May, which includes a student writing project where they will write their own ice cream machine story. We'd like to thank our parent organization for their help in providing funding to support the purchase of a book for every family. Today, Trager participated in National STEM Day. From 9:30 to 10:15, all of our classrooms participated in a grade-level STEM challenge. STEM Day encourages children to explore science, technology, engineering, and math through fun, interactive, and educational activities. Students use their power of logical thinking, creative thinking, critical thinking, problem-solving, and reasoning skills to bring something novel to their project. We were excited to have media coverage by Spectrum News today, so we look forward to seeing that next week. Tomorrow, we have our annual Veterans Day observance, where we will recognize 40 veterans who have connections to Trager. Veterans will also have the opportunity to visit our classrooms as part of our celebration. It's a great opportunity for our students to learn more about those who served our country, and the veterans are always so grateful for the experience. And then lastly, I want to talk about Sparty, our school therapy dog. Sparty is the first district-owned therapy dog. He was purchased with money from a coal fellowship and other grants, and we can't say enough about the positive impact Sparty has had on our school community. Sparty is deployed to students in need. He provides support to students experiencing anxiety. He serves as a reading buddy and has provided breaks for students. We have kids who have special Sparty jobs. They help with filling his water bowl, feeding him, and taking him on potty breaks. Sparty provides opportunities for students to practice empathy. Students notice how he feels, and they'll co-regulate with him when he gets nervous. They know when he's overwhelmed, when he tucks his tail in, and they often tell each other they have to back up or be quieter to help Sparty feel safe. Sometimes they give him hugs to help him feel better. If a student is having a hard time and is throwing things or yelling, we often just need to point out that Sparty's feeling scared, and the student will give him a hug and calm both Sparty and the child at the same time. Sparty's been very helpful to students with disabilities. He's provided opportunities for students receiving speech therapy to write stories about Sparty. Kids who have need social skills instruction are often drawn to Sparty. They will talk to him when they can't talk to peers or talk to adults, and confide in him when they have challenging situations. Sparty's also been deployed to schools across the district when there are crisis situations. We've seen such a benefit to having Sparty that we started a fund to raise money for more therapy dogs for the Oshkosh area school district. The fund is called "Sparty's Legacy." So thank you for letting me share some of the great things happening at Trager.
Any questions?
I do have a question.
Yes.
Yes. Where does Sparty go at night? And does he have a dog house?
Sparty lives with our school counselor. She is the handler of Sparty, so she takes care of him.
Okay.
And I'm the secondary handler, so I'm his grandma.
And he has like a little dog house in the school and stuff?
Yeah, he's got a place in our counselor's office, and then he also takes breaks in my office, so I have a kennel in my office as well.
That's awesome. Thank you for sharing that.
He's been a wonderful addition. Dr. Herzog.
I'm just wondering, thank you for that great report. What is the approximate cost of a therapy dog?
So the cost was about $9,000. He came already trained. And then there's also the ongoing medical bills that the district picks up for him as well, and the food. So the district truly owns him, and then he lives with Gailey.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, very nice. All right.
Thank you so much for your report.
Thank you, Brenna.
Have a great day.
Dr. Davis, land acknowledgement.
Yes, as we gather today, we would like to acknowledge that in Oshkosh, we are on the ancestral homelands of the Ho' chunk Nation and Menominee Indian Tribe of Wisconsin, who lived on the western shores of Lake Winnebago, Wisconsin's largest freshwater lake entirely within its borders. We acknowledge these indigenous sovereign nations who have stewarded this land throughout the generations and pay respect to their elders, past and present. We welcome the duty and opportunity to share stewardship of these lands.
Thank you very much. Next, approval of agenda. Does anyone have anything that they would like to move on the agenda?
Not this meeting, so moved.
Well, can we just do seeing no changes? We will accept the agenda as written. And Board President's Report. I'd like to let you all know that the holiday concert season is starting, and it's a very exciting time because it centers around our students. It makes sure that they are involved in something outside of education that certainly brings everything together, gives them a sense of belonging, and really showcases our schools and all of our students. So I urge you to get to any of the concerts you can. I have eight that I'm going to list right now, and these are the concerts between now and the next board meeting. Tomorrow night, there are two of them. First one, Vell Phillips Middle School for the 7th and 8th graders. Very exciting. 7 o'clock. South Park is tomorrow night also, 7th and 8th, and that's at 7 o'clock. Franklin is on Monday, and that's at 6 o'clock. Oak Lawn is Tuesday, November 14th at 6:30. Trager Elementary, Monday, November 20th, 6 o'clock. Interesting, on Tuesday, November 21st, the Oshkosh West High School Band will play in the Holiday Parade in Appleton. And that's at 7 o'clock. Two more to go. Emmeline Cook Elementary, Monday, the 27th, so we're post Thanksgiving at that point, at 6 o'clock, and Shapiro STEM, Tuesday, November 28th at 6:30. So if there are any of those that interested you, I hope you got to jot them down, and we'll be able to attend. It really makes the holiday season very special. Superintendent's Report.
All right, well, we'll kick it over to North and West High School for the student reports to start with. So we'll start with what's going on. Eva, over with Sparty.
I'm speaking of Sparty this month. Oshkosh North and West Orchestra, Oshkosh Northwest and North Orchestra had their spectacular concert on Tuesday, the 31st, at Alberta Kimball, under the direction of Yuki Go-Grind. It was frankly fun hour, filled with music, costumes, and candy. Communities Project, on November 24th, ONHS community students planned and organized the Veterans Day Courtyard Flag Raising Ceremony. The students worked hard to raise the money for figures to fund the project. The flags raised include the American flag, Wisconsin flag, as well as all branches of the military. Oshkosh Things. On November 4th, the choirs from around Oshkosh gathered in North Field House to perform the annual Oshkosh Things performance. All public schools, 5th through 12th, participated and put on a wonderful, powerful performance with their song "Make Them Hear You" from the musical Ragtime. Upcoming events. Veterans Day Assembly, North's 12th Annual, will be held tomorrow, on the 9th, in the North Field House. Special guest speakers this year are Mr. Bob Hoffman and Captain Jordan Olson. Our music department will also perform the National Anthem, Our Forces of America, and the song "If You're Out There" by John Legend. Matilda auditions and fundraiser. This year, North musical is Matilda. Auditions were held on Monday, the 6th, and Tuesday, the 7th. Casts will be announced on Friday, the 10th. The cast and crew of Matilda is also doing a fundraiser to raise money for the production, held on November 28th after school in North Field Auditorium. Thank you for checking Sparty.
All right. Excellent. Thank you. Charlotte?
All right, so what's going on Wildcats? You can see the first photo there is one of our wonderful chem teachers, Ms. Markon, with a wig on for Halloween, putting on a fun little chemistry spectacle for her students. So for past events, we had the first orchestra, band, and choir concerts of the season. Up top, we have our West Music Department dressed up as Mario Kart characters. On the bottom is me and some of my friends dressed up as Ken and Barbie for our Halloween concert. The one act play goes to State Orphan Trains. Our wonderful drama students were very hard on this. They won several awards, and State is in about a week and a half, I believe. Halloween Costume Contest. Every year, we have a school-wide costume contest. This is one of the groups that won a prize. These ladies are in choir, and they dressed up as princesses. This week was School Psychologist Appreciation Week, so shout out to our school psychologist, Mrs. Schmitz. She does wonderful things for many, many students. And our Hydroponic Garden. We have our first harvest of lettuce, and we are very excited for the food service. I'm sorry, I'm blanking. Food service and students at West to continue many fun things with that. So upcoming events, tomorrow and Friday, November 9th and 10th at 7:00 PM, we have the performance of Orphan Trains and the variety show, which will include acts from many different students. Musical and pit rehearsal began this week for Chicago, the teen version, not to worry anybody.
Thank you for the clarification, Charlie.
But we are super excited to perform that in late January for everyone. And lastly, this is partially district-related, but Oshkosh Youth Symphony Children's Concert is Tuesday for our 4th graders. I myself am part of this, and we are super excited. We have our public concert on Sunday, and then we perform for our wonderful 4th graders with their own homemade instruments on Tuesday. And that is all.
All right, great. Thank you both for those reports. And on to the Superintendent's Good News Report. We'll start at Franklin Elementary. So kindergartners at Franklin Elementary reflected on their recent trip to the pumpkin patch as they read "Five Little Pumpkins" poem in class. Afterwards, students got creative and used tally marks to practice combinations of five, a fun combination of reading, math, and Halloween fun. Speaking of Halloween, our Merrill Washington and Webster Stanley Elementary School staff members showed their excitement for next year, when the three families will unite together as Menominee Elementary. For Halloween, staff at all three schools dressed up in costumes themed "Under Construction." Not only creative, but a powerful reminder of how much our staff care about our school communities and preparing for the future. So thanks for everybody for participating in that. So that was great. And there's nothing like a good book. Students at Lakeside Elementary are developing a love for reading at every grade level, whether reading independently or enjoying a story as a group, as students have been busy strengthening their reading skills. So good work to everybody over there at Lakeside Elementary. Two of our talented music educators, Gloria Dorchner Mackey and Marlee Mindock, recently presented about adaptive music at the Wisconsin Music Educators Association Annual Conference. In the presentation, both teachers demonstrated teaching strategies and activities that they will use in their adaptive music classrooms. Music educators from all over the state praised them for their guidance for adaptive music educational programs, certainly grateful for their work and all that they do for our students and students across the state of Wisconsin. Oshkosh North English Speakers of Other Languages team led 62 of our ESOL students on a visit to the state Capitol. For many of our students, it was the first time visiting the Capitol. Throughout the tour, students explored the Wisconsin Legislative and Supreme Courtrooms while also delving into Wisconsin history and the Capitol Building. All of our 8th graders recently attended the Oshkosh Chamber of Commerce 2023 8th Grade Career Expo. Students were able to talk to local employers and engage in interactive displays to understand more about their future career paths. The students showed so much enthusiasm for their career exploration. We appreciate the Chamber of Commerce partnership, providing the opportunities for kids and businesses that spend time sharing their expertise. So that was a great event, and I will say, Vicki Poyer, just specifically, you know, credit to her work, because one of the things that she did to connect that experience with real world, like in an 8th grade space, is connect what their interests were with a class they could take in 9th grade. So a really like direct application as students will start to select classes in the upcoming months. So thanks for that experience. Our Oshkosh North and Oshkosh West Adaptive Sports League athletes traveled to Wisconsin Dells to take part in a showcase matchup. The student athletes were able to join in friendly competition with students from the lacrosse area, so great work on everybody there. Oshkosh West Hmong Dance Team dressed in different Hmong outfits and performed at an annual Oshkosh Hmong New Year. It was an excellent performance and great to see our students engaged in their culture and in our community. Great work. Carl Trager Elementary students had a rainy good time at the Thousand Islands Environmental Center. Students caught crayfish, tested the temperature and pH of the Fox River, and saw a deer in their nature hike. So looks like a great, great day of fun and learning. And again, just a list of places that I've been out and about since the last board meeting. So again, thank you, everybody, for accommodating, and certainly been a busy time of years. That concludes the Superintendent's Good News Report for tonight.
Thank you very much. Mr. Fox?
Hi.
Referendum projects update. Evening.
So tonight, we have an opportunity to speak to you, as we do every month, on the current status of the Menominee Elementary School project, as well as we have an opportunity to talk about the referendum costs this summer. I think this was a good time for us to take a brief pause and kind of gather ourselves and share what information we have on projects that are now fully complete. So for tonight's discussion, we want to do this, you know, start a little backwards. We want to start with a summary first and really try to explain where we've been, what we've done, remind everybody why we did it, how the projects finished, and then we'll break it down into a brief summary for each bucket of money, if you will. If you recall, the referendum that was passed in November of 2020 for $107 million included a capital improvement, our deferred maintenance package, which we will discuss in greater detail. Secure vestibule projects over nine schools, a new middle school, a new elementary school, and then a Merrill Site redevelopment. Capital improvement, deferred maintenance, was budgeted $9.33 million. That came in at $9.254, so well within budget, right on target, really. Secure vestibule projects was budgeted $8.99. Actual expenditures were $5,818,000. And then Vell Phillips Middle School was budgeted at $51,812,500, came in at $56,532,239. So I want to talk about those two just briefly. I think to talk about one, we really need to speak to both of them because they really were processed at the same time. So secure vestibule projects were in two phases. The referendum was passed in November of 2020. The first vestibule project, five schools, occurred in the summer of '21. We did then bid the second phase of secure vestibule projects the following winter, that January or December of '21, as well as Vell Phillips Middle School. We bid those at the same time, so we had a better understanding of exactly what was going to happen with the budgets. At that time, if you recall, the secure vestibule projects only had one bidder, and per policy where it should move, we're not allowed to move forward with that. So we stopped process on that project. Vell Phillips Middle School came in at that time with a low bidder at about $4.6 million above the $51,812,500 that we had on our referendum budget. So at that point, we processed through Facilities and Finance for approval and the full board. We opted to transfer $4 million from the secure vestibules project to the Vell Phillips Middle School project to get that project underway and to keep everything on schedule. And we did do that. We signed the AIA contract, and that project started on time. The secure vestibules project was then redesigned and was rebid in the winter of 2022, and it came in high again. We had multiple bidders. Capelli and Dietrich was the low bidder at $3,465,800. However, they were $946,576 above our projected budget. So when you look at the Capelli and Dietrich Award, that did go through Facilities and Finance for approval and the full board, of course, for contractual approval for construction, that amount of overage, as well as the gap that still remained after that $4 million transfer, really makes up the gap that we see at about $1.4, $1.5 million currently. If you total the referendum budget for capital improvement, secure vestibule, and Vell Phillips Middle School, as well as the final cost, you're going to see that gap exist right now.
So if I could jump in there for a second? I think it's worth pointing out that, you know, we passed the referendum in November of 2020. We approved through the board what the referendum amount was going to be, well ahead of that vote. And we all saw pretty unprecedented inflationary values in the year of 2020 and into 2021. Our team worked together to battle those pieces, and one of the pieces that came up in the initial bid of the secure vestibules, Part II, so this would have been when it bid with Vell Phillips, was, did come in high. And so at that point in time, we realized that we were continuing to fight inflation, could redesign the projects and still accomplish the security process and then allocate those funds. So I just wanted to share kind of some of those things as a reminder of kind of where we were in 2020 and why we felt comfortable to reallocate those $4 million, and that was discussed enough and enough.
Absolutely. Thank you for that. So with regard to that gap, we've got a couple of different levers that we intend on using. We have money remaining, some money remaining from the construction of Vell Phillips Middle School. We're just finishing a final payment of that project. We intend on using that to help fill that gap. We also have money from, projected money from Menominee Elementary School construction. Right now, it's trending at just under $35 million to complete that project. You can see we're at $35,480 for a budget, so that could very well come in somewhere between $500,000 and $800,000. We also have, what was I going to say? Referendum interest earnings, excuse me. So at the time that bonds were sold to fund all of these construction projects, Mr. Nihans did invest that money into interest-bearing accounts. So we have approximately $2.5 million that will be available to Oshkosh area schools at the end of construction for Menominee that needs to be utilized on one of the items identified as part of the referendum projects. So we intend on using that as well if there are any budget gaps existing between some of the construction projects, or could easily be rolled into the Merrill Site redevelopment, as that is the one project that's still yet to be started.
That referendum interest earnings is a very typical situation. Through any district going through a referendum process in the state, I think if you were to ask Mr. Nihans how the interest earnings were looking when the referendum passed in 2020, they were quite poor. Thankfully, we were able to process the borrowing in such a way that, you know, we didn't have to pull from that investment too quickly, and the interest rates are obviously much better. So other districts, you know, in times of, like, for instance, right now, that invested this sort of money, sometimes see a greater value. We are kind of a solution of what the economy has been over the past three to four years, but this is a kind of a normal solution. I do want to just make mention that, obviously, Jim and I have come up here over the past 12 to 18 months and have mentioned that we have been on budget and on time. I think it's worth noting that when the contract values were awarded, both for the Vell Phillips Middle School project and the security projects, both projects ended with a net change order of a negative amount. So when we came up here and we talked at these board meetings and we reported to you that we were on budget and on time, that was related to the construction contract amount that was approved here, and just wanted to make a note of that tonight.
I appreciate that. Before we move into the breakdown of each one of these, are there any questions on how the money was moved and why at that time? Can we clarify anything? Okay. So looking at each one of these, our capital improvement budget, deferred maintenance, went toward electrical renovations, fire system replacements, generators, mechanical upgrades at Carl Trager, and roofing sections. You can see the final costs for each individual section. Again, that came in on time and under budget at $9.2 million, $9,254,407.
For the next slide on the secure vestibules projects, this will look similar to the following slide when we talk about Vell Phillips. So we broke both projects down into a construction contract value, architectural engineering, city planning fees, loose furnishings, and equipment, and moving utilities and startup costs. These are all typical costs for any large construction process. So you would be able to, similar to what I just stated as far as saying that we are, you know, finishing at a final cost on the construction contract, go back to, you know, one of the original board reports, and these numbers would be lower than we expected. So for the secure vestibules projects, as Jim mentioned earlier, this does take into account the construction that happened in 2021 at the initial five buildings, and that also accounts for the construction projects completed this summer in 2023 between the nine different buildings. So if you take those two construction contract values together, we're at $4.7 million. The architectural engineering and city planning fees... The architectural engineering and city planning fees, on those account for, again, architectural engineering, but also geotechnical studies, which include borings, site survey, city municipal review fees, such as when we submit to the county or the state, includes all, all of those fees to get approval in design of the projects. Loose furnishings and equipment, I, I like to light-heartedly say that if you could somehow pick up the building and shake what came out of it, that is that bucket. So 226,000 for the secure vestibule projects. And then moving utilities and startup costs. So although there are some ties to the building itself, such as relocating utility services, getting, moving, moving pieces as far as boxes or things like that, those, those accounts come up to about 200,000 for the secure vestibule projects. For Vell Phillips, again, those four basic categories. The construction contract value ended for the project at 50.2 million. Off of memory, I think we started at about 50.5. So we've gotten seen that negative value at the end there. Architectural engineering and city planning fees, this one had quite a bit more because there was a lot more extensive research done on this project. But again, architectural engineering, lots of city coordination, state planner review fees, again, geotechnical site survey, acoustical analysis. And then a pretty extensive traffic study was, was completed on this project as well. So that's what you're seeing in that bucket. Loose furnishings mimics the comment I made earlier, as well as the moving utilities and startup costs are larger in this case as well. Obviously, you can start to see a bit bigger, bigger buckets, especially for these last two. But you can imagine, you know, furnishing a brand-new school with all the furnishings, you know, comes with a dollar amount and, and along with other things inside there, such as new tech ed equipment and things like that. And I think it's really promising for the school district to be investing in those ways into these new buildings. So hold on.
Could I, I'm sorry.
Mr. Current.
I started talking when Dr. Herzak raised your hand.
That's all right.
Did we get the bleacher situation at Vell Phillips figured out? Do we have them completely?
That's correct.
Okay. I thought so.
Can hold the whole student body.
Excellent. Thank you.
That's great. Dr. Herzak?
Thank you. I have two questions. One is in regard to the outside, the exterior sign of the building, where it says in very nice, clear letters, Vell Phillips Middle School. And then there's a black area below, below that that's empty. Is that going to have messages on that in the future?
Yes, it will. I'm working with technology right now. The particular software, for whatever reason, is not functioning as, as promised. So we're working through Myron and Technology and Julie and we're good to go.
Thank you. And then my last question is regarding the Jackson Street side of the building. I believe many of us have received communication regarding some additional work to be done on the extra structure or infrastructure on the exterior of the building. Can you give us an update on that?
I can't. First, I just want to note that, that it's a dust collector as part of the tech, tech ed shop. That was part of the project that was approved to be constructed as part of the project. We are working with, with Bray right now on what type of structure. So it's in the planning phase at this point. It would likely be a bronze, some sort of a bronze louvered structure that would provide some concealment, allow some air exchange, you know, kind of blend with the building and help conceal that, that collector.
Thank you very much.
That's, that's really good to hear because that neighborhood association just recently reached out to us and they'll be excited to hear that news. So thank you.
And we'll have a representative at the next neighborhood meeting. So Julie Conrad will be representing the district just to be able to give that update.
Okay. Awesome. Before we go into the elementary construction, are there any questions on referendum? Menominee, pretty exciting place to be. Things are moving along rapidly. They've had excellent weather. So we're completed in the last 30 days. Again, Area A is that second through fifth grade. Next to gymnasium, load-bearing walls on the north side of the gym are complete. Non-load-bearing interior walls are complete, structural steel, precast planks. This is all the masonry stuff, right? The precast plank is, is actually the, the planks that they set, which will become the floor of the second floor. And then they usually pour a topping slab over that and then they'll start building their, their bearing and non-bearing walls for the second floor. MEP roughens, your mechanical, electrical plumbing roughens are always ongoing. And concrete slab on grade, Area A. So I know that they poured the gymnasium and they're going to continue to pour now for the first floor concrete in the coming weeks. Some quick photos. Upper left is a view from the northwest corner of the school that was open for quite a while while they had a crane inside of the school. They're able to back it out and finish that corner. To your right on top is the northeast corner of the school. You could start to see, of course, you're seeing the foundational walls right now. That is the edge of the school. That will be all curtain wall, which is a glassy wall, structural steel, a little bit of masonry. That will be the cafeteria. And behind that, you can see they're building the walls for the, what will ultimately be the serveri and, and group bathrooms. Bottom left is the cell site of Area A, so where that, where a piece of equipment sits will really be the playground, if you can envision that. And as the school wraps around that piece of equipment. And then Area D, some of you may have been wondering, what is this thing being built out in the middle of nowhere? It's actually structural, so that, that is part of the building, which would be building Section D, which is actually your kindergarten first grade eventually. It's the last part of the building that'll get built. But it just so happens that that is going to be, from the ground up, becomes the mechanical penthouse. So and because of the weight and everything they need to put in a penthouse, it's structural. And so they built that up and they'll tie in with the building at a later date.
And Jim, by penthouse, you mean just the mechanics that'll sit on the roof?
A mechanical, yep, correct. It's a room that sits on top of the roof.
On top of the roof, okay.
It's not your penthouse.
No, not my penthouse.
Want to be clear, yeah.
Penthouse, yes.
Technical term.
Penthouse is, is a term for basically a mechanical mezzanine. But if we, if we call it a penthouse, there's some, some implications associated to it. So that will house all the mechanical that serves the kindergarten kind of building.
Yeah, okay. Thank you for that. Traveling inside the building, again, to upper left, third grade classrooms. Their, the walls are going up as we speak. This is kind of an open look at, at what is that wing? Upper left, second grade, collapsed space outside the classrooms. Lower left, Area A, which is again, that, that third grade, next to the gymnasium. And then lower right, east side, you can see the walls going up. That'll become your serveri and group bathrooms for the cafeteria. So in the next 30 days, we expect to see additional footings and foundation walls for Area C, which is going to be primarily the first floor. It's going to be your administration building, art, music, second floor library. Area A, load-bearing walls on the second floor. Some of the masons will be moving up to second floor and really focusing on is that we start to look ahead, they, they really want to get everything fully enclosed and heated prior to Christmas break. So that's where we're trending. MEP roughens will continue. You'll start to see full-mev exteriors on A and B. I could add to that list that windows will be going in shortly, based on today's meeting. And structural steel will be going into Area B probably into early part of December. Any questions on the progress of Menominee?
It's moving right along. Mr. Current.
Yeah, so knock on wood here, good weather. But what, what are we looking at to, you know, to get into a place? Looks like some of the first floor is covered up, so there's, you know, just want to know is there a goal in getting some of that done so that we can, you know, disregard what snow might be coming soon?
Right. So they feel, Myron feels that they will have Area A and B, which will be your cafeteria and your second through fifth grade, plus a gymnasium. They'll have windows in, they'll have heat running. It'll be weather tight, so they can start working on interior finishes probably by third week of December. And then, you know, the masons will be working outside, which is not uncommon. We saw that at Vell Phillips as well. They run scaffolding. They'll tent everything off while they're running masonry and, and enclose the building.
I know we got lucky last year with the way the weather worked out. It really helped. So let's hope that we get some good luck again this year.
Based on today's meeting, I think everyone on that site is looking forward to next week. I don't know if you keep to head up the weather, but 50s and 60s, they will continue to make good progress.
Perfect. Excellent. That's great. Any other questions? Thank you very much for your report.
Thank you.
Mr. Nihans, Budget variance ESSER funds update.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Your budget variance report for this month goes through the month of October. So we're, we're through the second month of school. Right now, our operating funds, Funds 10 and Funds 27 are running a little bit behind trend. Some of that I'm still working through with our, our consultant on, we're kind of throwing trend off on purpose ourself this year. When we paid the stipends, we, we split out when we did raises for staff. We did a base wage component and a stipend component. In that stipend component, this is the first time we've done that. So that's throwing trend off. So the trend calculator that, that goes into that isn't sure how to respond. And we're kind of working and trying to run different scenarios to see what would be the best to get a more accurate picture of where we are and where we're going to trend out to. But that takes a lot of manipulation of percentages within the calculation itself. So at this point, I would not expect that we are going to end the year where we're trending, where the forecasting is based on trend, because they trend that first month out at a higher percentage for the rest of the fiscal year. So we're, well, I'll keep working through that and hopefully in, in the next month or two, we'll have a little bit better, more accurate projection based on having to manipulate that trend.
Can we explain what Fund 10 and what Fund 27 are? Because people at home are probably like, oh, they're projecting a deficit in Fund 10 and Fund 27. They're probably like, what is Fund 10 and what is Fund 27?
Sure. Collectively, they, they typically are referred to as our operating funds. So they are the operations of the day-to-day business of the school district. So general fund is encompassing pretty much all of what we do. Fund 27 is special education fund. That does get carved out and it has to stand alone. Anything within Fund 27 that we don't do, you're not allowed to have a negative balance in that. So anything that you don't get from state or federal aid within Fund 27, we have to fund through Fund 10. So there is a transfer at the end of every year to make Fund 27, the special education fund, whole. So collectively, those are our operation funds, which is why a lot of times we just refer to them together because they really are joined.
Okay. Thank you.
So the other parts of the reports, I just want to highlight food service is right now currently showing a deficit. Again, as we've kind of talked about in the past, a lot of that is just due to timing of claims. There's a two- or three-month lag between claims and when that actually gets processed by DPI. So at this point, we are not seeing any revenue coming in for food service. Obviously, we had revenue in September and October. It just hadn't actually come through and gone through the system. Food service is actually doing very well right now as far as participation. Our participation's been up in almost every building for breakfast and for lunch, especially at West, where we did join West into the CEP program. So meals are free for the students. That participation has gone up as expected. We've, we've been doing a really good job there and the kids are really participating well. So that, it's not going to be what, what the current report actually is trending out. The rec department, I do want to highlight, there's been some additional work at the Kimball Auditorium. And I'm going to have Mr. Helmbruck come to the December Facility and Finance meeting to give more in-depth detail on the project there that is causing a little bit of a budget, budget issue. We added, expanded the hearing loop to the upper part of the auditorium, the upper bowl. That was not planned for, for this year, but it was something that we went ahead and did. We had some community interest in expanding that. So we did that project and a correlated project to having to put carpet in on all of the aisles in the upper bowl. When the hearing loop was installed, it created an optical illusion when the lights went down, that you actually had an additional step where there wasn't a step. Several of us went over. After we, we had recognized that, we turned the lights off. I was tripping on my way up the steps, even though I knew what was, I was supposed to be looking at. So we are in the process of getting the carpet installed in there. So hopefully before the real holiday concerts really start, where we need the whole auditorium seating, those, the, the new carpet will be in place. So that's causing a little bit of a budget crunch in the Kimball part of the budget for the rec. Again, Mr. Helmbruck will come to the next, the December Facility and Finance Committee and have a little bit more detail, a little bit more discussion on, on that.
Sounds great.
Any questions on the, the variance reports?
No, but I'll give a shout out to the West food service. My daughter and a lot of her friends have decided they really like that. And I see that money ticking out of my account continually because they're doing such a good job there. So, yeah.
Thank you for your contribution.
Thank you.
Dr. Herzak, did you have a comment?
I did have, well, actually, I thank you for your report. And I also want to ask, I know most of our schools are providing free and, free breakfast and lunch to our students. In what schools is that not available?
So currently, it's Oakwood Elementary and then Carl Traeger Elementary and Middle School.
Thank you very much.
Kirk, thank, you're welcome.
Thank you very much for your report. Next report, selection of financial institutions.
Yes, so we are starting a process here and the, the request for proposal was included in your board materials. It's been since 2015, 16 year that the district has done a request for proposal for banking services. So we are in that process right now. We will publish the request for proposal and on November 17th, we'll get the proposals back January 12th and then we'll bring the recommendation back here in the end of February, at the last board meeting in February. Really part of what we're trying to also accomplish with this, with this process is to make sure that we have alignment with our, our partners and what the district core values are, also align with what our partners are, and also that we truly have a partnership. One of, for example, one of the things we're including in the RFP is that they be a participant within a scoreboard project that we have going and they'll be a key anchor partner with us. And, and that'll come with some financial donation or sponsorship money as well. And then the expectation that they're going to do more within the community that aligns with our core values as a district. So we're writing some of that into, very specifically into the request for proposal to make sure that we, we get a true partner.
That's great.
Any questions on this?
Did this, was this RFP process discussed in the committee level?
It's going to be, the timing of the Facilities and Finance and the board level are a little bit out of the normal whack. It's on the agenda for tomorrow on the Facilities and Finance. And Julie Conrad will be having a larger discussion, discussion at that point with the, the committee.
Okay. I guess I just have one comment that I wanted to say about that. And when I, I was, I requested that we look at our banks and consider whether or not there is a financial advantage or disadvantage to switching. At the time, you know, we cannot discuss anything as a board unless it's publicly noted. So this is our first opportunity to discuss what happened to one of our employees at Associated Bank. Okay? And the board was first made aware of the situation July 14th. And we also received updates on July 24th, August 11th, September 18th, September 29th. And so this, to me, would suggest, in my opinion, that this, in fact, was a board issue. What happened to Dr. Coleman at Associated Bank is inexcusable. And I just want to go on record as saying that, that is, in fact, the reason why I suggested that we switch banks. I'm hoping that my board members will support Dr. Coleman on this. And I think that, you know, I know that I sent a text saying that by saying and doing nothing, we are complicit. There's a quote, an unknown quote, "Silence is the voice of complicity." It is not always comfortable to talk about things that happen in our community. But I think it's very important. And we, as a board, have an opportunity to communicate to the community that inequality will not be tolerated. So, food for thought from my fellow board members, and thank you for doing that.
Any other comments? Dr. Herzak?
Very briefly. How common is it, how common is it for a district of our size to have all of its banking services in one institution?
It really varies. I guess one of the things I am anticipating that is going to happen is we're going to end up with multiple partners. I guess, at least that's, I want to see what the proposals are, but I would, that's the way I would lean personally. I had multiple partners in my prior district, a much, much smaller district. But that being said, there's also a lot of things we need to make sure any of our banking partners have. There's a lot of fraud security, a lot of things that we need to make sure that are in place for us to do that. And the reality in our district, we run a lot of, a lot of money through a checking account. So, we would anticipate we're going to have at least one primary bank that the majority of what we do funnels through. And then, we may potentially have multiple different partners for different earnings ratios, or some of those kinds of opportunities. I guess it really could, it depends on the district. Some districts do multiple, some do one. It depends on what you get.
And then, just a comment. I appreciate that within this request, there's an indication that we're looking to work with one or more institutions who share our core values. So, thank you for that.
My question is, why did it, why hasn't this been looked at since 2016? Because typically, like, anyone in their household, you know, you shop insurance, you shop mortgages sometimes. Like, what is our general policy with things on this matter, or I should say, practice, to make sure that we're always getting the best deal?
I think the best practice, what I'm used to and what I'm trying to do moving forward, is we should annually be looking at this at the committee level and going through what our banking partners provide us, where our money is, what they're, if we have multiple partners, why we utilize multiple partners, and what they do for us on an annual basis. I would say whether or not you actually RFP your bank for an organization our size, if out of this process, it is, the boards wants to shift banks and move away from Associated into another bank, that's probably going to be three months of work for the business office at our busiest time of the year, moving into an audit. It's very, it's not real simple in a business this size to transfer and get your main banking. You've got most of our money, all of our grant money, the money from the state, is automatically funneled into accounts. You start changing where those deposits go and how they come out. That all takes some time, and it's going to, there's going to be some mistakes that happen. So, it is a big process for a district our size to shift banks and to do that. I guess if we look at it, my thought is, if we look at it at the committee level on an annual basis, if we see something that's not correct, we can, we can make some adjustments there. Otherwise, as long as we have a good relationship with our primary, I don't know how often you're going to RFP this. Banks are only going to submit if they think they have a chance. If they don't, they won't submit a proposal.
What do we do, 153 million? Is that the number?
North of 165.
165?
Operationally, all-in, we're about 250 million right now, all-in, with our referendum money.
So, we should be able to leverage, I mean, banks should be eager
They are.
to want our business and to give us a really good deal, which helps us all, you know? Well, thanks for answering that. I just want to make sure we're always doing that and we're mindful of it.
Any other questions? Thank you for your report.
Thank you.
Thank you, Drew. Legislative Talking Points, Dr. Davis.
Yes, I wanted to just give an update for the board on legislative talking points that have been put together through the Legislative Committee, and then also shared with our legislators as we've been doing some individual meetings with our representatives. So, just some highlights, you know, from some of the communications that we've had. One is a note of gratitude for our representatives, for their hard work. This past budget certainly was beneficial to the Oshkosh Area School District. And so, some of those talking points of gratitude are raising the low-revenue ceiling from $10,050 to $11,000 a year per pupil. So, that was certainly helpful, resulting in about $8 million of additional revenue for the district. An increase for special ed funding, which certainly we appreciate. It was a 3.3% increase. So, we were advocating for more of a 30% increase, so we've got more advocacy to do in that space. And, you know, from some things that I've heard from the party leadership, I think that might be something that we continue to advocate for as we're moving forward. But nonetheless, $800,000 is a good amount of money for us to be able to move forward with. Mental health funding, and that's statewide, not specific to Oshkosh, but $30 million for school-based mental health is certainly important. And then, early literacy, early literacy programming. So, Act 20 is the current literacy legislation. You'll hear more about that a little bit tonight. But that certainly aligns with our initiatives on improving literacy across our system and getting a more comprehensive programming. So, we just want to thank our legislators for their advocacy and their work in completing that for us. Couple areas that we want to just, again, continue to advocate for, one is special education, which we have previously talked about. Also, looking at career and technical education and providing some additional support at a state level for some consistent incentive grant dollars for providing kids with school-to-work opportunities. Right now, most of the incentives are determined, a pot of money, and no matter how many kids participate in that program, that's how much each student per pupil would get. And so, what we're asking for is, let's get a set amount per pupil, so no matter how many kids, how many kids participate, then we would have that amount of money. So, that would be more incentivizing for us, certainly. And that's an area in our key performance indicators that we have to be able to grow that work experience. So, that's important. And then, finally, just continuing our advocacy around vouchers, and specifically, trying to have that separated from the local property tax. So, we had a significant increase because of the voucher commitment that was made through this budget. Oshkosh taxpayers will be looking at about a $7.1 million contribution to vouchers for our local schools that take vouchers. So, that's a significant number. And so, that's something, just as a reminder, from a community standpoint, that's something that is levied through our school bill. So, our tax levy at the school absorbs that $7.1 million. And we act as a pass-through then to pay for those voucher, those voucher students. So, it's not an impact, it's not a reduction to our budget, but it's more of a pass-through. But it does, that is an additional $7.1 million that gets collected from taxpayers. So, just really trying to get the word out on that and make sure that that stays, stays in front of our legislators. So, hopefully, we can get a change in the way that's allocated and make it a little bit more clear for our residents. So, that's, those are the highlights legislatively. Like I said, we've got a meeting coming up with Senator Fionn, met with Representative Paul Mary last week, and just appreciate their continued engagement with us as we're moving forward.
That's great. I believe, I may be incorrect, I believe that I just heard Beloit has two line items, has the voucher line item and then the city tax line item.
I'll have to check into that. So, yeah, I'm not familiar with that.
Okay. Any questions for Dr. Davis? Thank you. That concludes board and administrative reports. Next, we have non-agenda-related public forum. We have one person signed up tonight. It's Mrs. Erdman. Clearly state your name and address, topic you wish to address, your matters of concern. Limit your comments to three minutes.
Hi, my name is June Erdman. I live at 415 South Meadow Street in Oshkosh. I'm a former elementary teacher, a former education professor, and a grandma of a child who will be in the district shortly. I want to give a shout-out for our public school librarians. They're among the most trusted people in the, among public servants in the United States, librarians are. They tend to be kind and very capable ladies and gentlemen, who generally love to read and know books and have studied books and hold themselves to standards and high quality when they select books. I believe in Oshkosh, there is a, we're going to see a little bit of a local book banning initiative that some of our local people have found value in. And I want to say that I have more in common with my neighbors who are involved in this than I do with some of the national people, typically billionaires, to tell you the truth, who are funding this initiative. And I think people may get caught up in this, and I think there's danger to it in terms of distracting us from the other important work in the district. I just want to say thank you to the librarians. I know they are concerned about this. Thank you for their service. I see them being very, very capable people, and I think they deserve our support and our recognition for the fine work that they do. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Agenda-related public forum, we have one person signed up. Mr. Suwala.
Hello, everybody. My name is Akunyes Bura. 1776 Greber Street, two sons in the district. I've been doing this advocacy work for quite a number of years now. I see familiar faces here, I've spoken to some of you individually or collectively. This evening, Dr. Sam Coleman is going to present a report. And for me, this is a report that I can't celebrate. This is a report that I feel disappointed over and over. As I remember, five years ago, I was on this microphone, asking the school board at the time, like, how long are we going to wait seeing our kids keep failing? I hope you guys took a big dive into today's presentation and look at the numbers and the charts. You can split the report in different ways, it's fine, but I also focus on exactly what I was interested in. It's very interesting to see that for black students in this report, tonight, out of 720 kids, these are black kids, only 58 can read proficiently. That's unacceptable. I don't even know what to say. Imagine, given, give yourself a situation where you have these kids with you, and they are pouring out to you to tell you that the country, how it feels. Being with these mothers, over summer, spending time with them, talking to me about the futures of their children. This is a report that I can't, I can't celebrate, because behind all these numbers, these are heartbreaks to families, and these are futures of kids that are destroyed. I do believe the school district and the school board have a mandate, and one mandate that I think, which all of us here have, is to educate our students. And on this mandate, after 10 years of saying this, and this, and this, and this, over and over, you've all failed us. You have all failed those kids that have graduated last year and this year, and many more to come. I know you can do better. I don't believe you can do better, but I know you can do better, because this is the truth, at this second. So, moving forward, I demand more accountability, I demand more changes towards this. Demand more of yourselves. So, Dr. Coleman, I'm sorry, I'm not going to celebrate this report tonight. To me, and those folks that have graduated, and those families at home, that are sad what's going on, this is not a report that we should celebrate tonight. We should be all be angry and demand accountability. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, yes, Mr. Kearns.
Can I move to a five-minute recess before we get started on the workshop?
Sure. Someone like to second it?
Sure, I'll second.
Okay. Can you call the roll, please?
Just one second. Herzak.
Hi.
Kearns.
Hi.
Solachi.
Hi.
Ray.
Hi.
Wyland.
Hi.
Carolyn.
Hi.
DeWitt.
Hi.
Five minutes.
The Oshkosh Board of Education is currently in a break. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on-demand at oshkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us. Coverage will resume shortly. The Oshkosh Board of Education is currently in a break. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on-demand at oshkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us. Coverage will resume shortly. The Oshkosh Board of Education is currently in a break. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on-demand at oshkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us. Coverage will resume shortly. The Oshkosh Board of Education is currently in a break. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on-demand at oshkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us. Coverage will resume shortly. The Oshkosh Board of Education is currently in a break. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on-demand at oshkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us. Coverage will resume shortly. The Oshkosh Board of Education is currently in a break. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on-demand at oshkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us. Coverage will resume shortly.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Workshop this evening, we'll be listening to Mr. Coleman and Dr. Coleman and Friends.
All right, thank you. I am joined by our secondary director, Director Kiff Meyer, our elementary director, Dr. Brown. Director Cole will also join as part of this presentation. Tonight's presentation will not be minimized to just rolling through slides and charts, looking to squeeze glimmers of hope or bright spots out of what we all know is a very well-documented case for urgent improvement within our system and our practices. Instead, this presentation is an opportunity for us to engage in some truth-telling about where we have fallen short and public accountability for where we are right now. This presentation is not a characterization of our students' capabilities because we believe to our core that there is not a single student in this district that cannot thrive under the right circumstances and if given the right opportunities. This presentation is also not an indictment on the capabilities or intentions of our teachers, our teacher assistants, our support staff and our administrators because I believe to my core that we all share a common commitment to seeing all of our students succeed. As a system, we are producing results that don't reflect our potential. And we'll talk about those results in a second. We acknowledge this fact and the real ways that students and families bear the brunt of our system that is not operating effectively. So with that, we know that safe tweaks around the margins will not change our results in ways that we can celebrate. We also know and acknowledge that we have begun to leverage structural changes to identify and urgently address core issues in our curriculum, how we use our assessments and alignment of high-impact instructional practices. So with that, we'll talk about our data. We'll do some true telling in a way that brings us publicly accountable. And then we'll talk about what some of our key communications and commitments are as we go forward to address where we've fallen short and to sustain where we see promise.
Can I stop you just for a second? You had a sentence and I was trying to write down. You said, "Students have," it was about the accountability. Could you repeat that sentence?
Yep, so I said that this is not a characterization of our students' capabilities because we believe to our core that there isn't a single student in this district that can't thrive under the right circumstances and if given equitable opportunities.
Okay, thank you.
So tonight's focus will be under our learning and academics portion of our key performance indicators. We'll talk about math achievement, reading achievement, and our composite ACT scores. So I'll just briefly go through this. So we define our reading achievement in the following way. The Oshkosh Area School District has set rigorous reading goals and policy to establish high expectations of student achievement in reading and create a direct connection from the boardroom to the classroom. The Oshkosh Area School District uses local data in reading for grades three through eight, that would be I-ready, and then including formative assessments, which are a quick way for teachers to understand where students are in their learning. Those assessments are given three times a year.
And also, can I just, just to make sure, because I got a question earlier in the day just regarding the assessments that are used between I-ready and the forward exam. And so we did, just a reminder to the board, we did take a look at our I-ready scores in June as they had just come out. So this presentation includes those scores, but also includes the forward and the ACT scores that were not available in June. So therefore, that's why this presentation would be an addition to. If you saw numbers that were familiar, that's where that is coming from. So just to clarify that in some context.
So all of these are through June?
Correct, yeah, these are, yes, that's accurate.
All right, so our rating from last year's data would be two stars. Forty to forty-nine percent of students in grades three through eight score proficient on the spring I-ready reading diagnostic.
Can I interrupt a second? Sorry. I know we approved the KPI and if you want to, it feels to me like reading achievement is much more important than just fifteen percent of that. And I know that's kind of, there's a lot of other things that go into that. We got district report card, college credit, work experience, math, composite ACT. Just feels like it's a fifteen percent that is bigger than just fifteen percent. Because it feels like that is, in some sense, the crutch of everything that we do, right? So I just, I see fifteen up there and that kind of just throws it off, but it feels like it's more than that.
Well, we do have our literacy goals, specific goals as well, if that makes a difference.
Yeah, what I was going to say, it's in addition to the literacy goals, our strategic plan, remember, was, is an annual document. So we'll be bringing that in February to be able to show our performance. That would be a time, if there's any edits that the board would like to make to percentages, to have an opportunity to discuss that and we could, you know, make modifications as needed, so.
Good idea.
All right, so as we look to celebrations from our 2023, 2020, 2022, 2023 school year, our focus on improving foundational literacy skills in grades K through two have resulted in sixty-six point three percent of our students being proficient according to the PALS assessment. So at that time, that is an assessment that we used and set goals around. And so this number is slightly above the goal that we set and we anticipate a continued upward trend. It is important to note that this assessment is not one that we will use in years going forward, but at that time, this is one that we had used to set some goals around. The second celebration is the.
Dr. Herzog.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. I'll wait until after you're finished. Thank you.
The percentage of students in grades three through eight who are proficient in reading according to our forward and I-ready assessments increased by three percent. So that number is slightly above, slightly below the goal that we set. But it is the highest percentage of students that we've had proficient in our district in reading since the pandemic. And we anticipate a continued upward trend.
Dr. Herzog. Thank you. I'm sorry to have interrupted you. My question is, what is the, what is the alignment of the PALS assessment to the forward exam? And similarly, how do, how does the I-ready program align with forward? Because we see, for example, sixty-six point three percent of students are proficient according to the PALS assessment, but that doesn't seem to be reflected in the forward exam. So I'm just wondering what the, how well those are aligned. I mean, it's important to show growth. That's true. Whether it's I-ready or rapid cycles of improvement in the PALS assessment. But what I'm looking for is how does that translate into improved scores on the forward exam? That doesn't seem to be related.
There is not a clear and close relationship between PALS and forward. They're measuring, yeah, so that clear relationship is not there. What we see student performance results look like on the I-ready assessments, we do see a closer alignment and we can use that information to predict how students will perform on forward.
So if PALS is not aligned to forward, why are we using that?
We won't be, yeah.
Okay.
No, I'm so sorry. We are no longer using PALS. This year, we're using teaching strategy is gold and later in this presentation, share about what we will be, well, we don't know exactly what we'll be utilizing, but DPI is going to be coming up with a screener for K through third grade that we will be utilizing.
Okay, thank you very much.
I have a question on this slide, also.
This is Carolyn.
On the last sentence, the number is slightly above our 2023 goal. What was our 2023 goal and how much should I read about it?
So I have that in the slide that.
Okay, it's coming. Let's continue.
All right, so opportunities for improvement. So we'll maintain a focus on explicit and systematic phonics and foundational literacy instruction in our early grades. We'll expand our focus and improvement efforts to grades three through eight to strategically sustain and accelerate student proficiency. There are clear patterns of inequities when we look at race, when we look at students who receive special education services, and when we look at socioeconomic status. And we know that these outcomes have to be urgently addressed. And so we'll leverage this data and continue to analyze it through those identity and experience lenses to identify the root causes of the factors that contribute to those gaps. And then we'll facilitate a multi-year systemic focus on reading and literacy engagement. So we know that reading and literacy skills are essential for our students to thrive, not just in their language arts and English classes, but really in all of their academic disciplines. For math, the Oshkosh Area School District has set rigorous math goals as well to establish high expectations for student achievement in mathematics. The Oshkosh Area School District uses local data and mathematics for grades three through eight. Again, that will be I-ready, including formative assessments, which are a quick way for teachers to understand where students are in their learning. These assessments are given three times a year for I-ready. So our math rating is also two stars with forty to forty-nine percent of students in grades three through eight scoring proficient according to I-ready math. What we've identified as points to acknowledge are, was a two percent increase in math proficiency for students in grades three through eight according to the I-ready math assessment. And although we fell slightly short of our goal, the percentage of students who were proficient in math according to the I-ready assessment is the highest number of students proficient in math since the pandemic. And we continue, we anticipate these results to continue on an upward trend. We have some opportunities to improve and one of those key areas is to reinforce a focus on math instruction and skills development for all students. So we certainly will continue to hear the importance of literacy, but we can't forget to prioritize math as well and that. And so we'll reinforce that focus. And similar to what I shared about our literacy results, we also see very clear patterns of inequities in our math outcomes with those same lenses of identity around racial identity, students who receive special education services, socioeconomic status, and linguistic diversity. So we'll leverage our data in those areas to analyze root causes and factors within our instruction, within our assessment, within our teaching learning practices to identify what is contributing to those gaps. And then we will reaffirm math skills development as a system-wide priority and leverage assessment data to inform universal instructional priorities. And then lastly, our goals around our ACT composite score. The American College Test, or ACT, is a college entrance exam taken by over 1.3 million students annually. All of our students here in the district participate in the ACT assessment. This ACT is designed to measure skills that are most important for success in post-secondary education and are attained in high school courses. The score range for each of the four multiple-choice tests is one through thirty-six, with the composite score being the average of the four test scores. The average state of Wisconsin ACT score is currently in the nineteen through twenty range. And for that rating, we are at a three-star rating where our ACT composite score is at a range of eighteen to nineteen point nine. We don't have any celebrations to highlight. We have work to do and we are aware of what that work is. And so the opportunity for improvements are to address these significant and persistent gaps in math and reading that exist and are measured by our ACT scores. We have analyzed our ACT data to identify instructional priorities to address specific skills that a significant number of our students tend not to be proficient in by eleventh grade and we'll talk about what those are. Pre-ACT data will be strategically used to inform instructional priorities in grades nine through 10, as well as inform instructional priorities in earlier grades before students arrive to high school to increase the likelihood of proficiency on the ACT by eleventh grade.
Can I just interrupt a moment? Appreciate the honesty of maybe no celebrations, but I know there were quite a few kids who did score pretty highly on those ACTs as well. And to those, I think there's some shout-outs as well. So we do have some that are performing pretty well and I know we don't want to, you know, miss that, but.
Yes, sir. Thank you for that point. The next slide is a summary of the public release data around ACT, pre-ACT, and the Wisconsin forward exam. So that information was released in September 2023. The I-ready reports from the spring of 2023, as mentioned already, those were shared in June. And the most recent school report cards are scheduled to be released later this month. Next slide you've seen, this is our information around our school district demographics. And then before I hand it over, I just want to share some key communications to frame and underscore what we will present as we share out this data. So while there are examples of growth to celebrate, Christopher Kearns just mentioned some examples to celebrate, we do celebrate those examples of growth. We also know that overall, we're not where we want to be and these overall results do not reflect our potential. We are responsible for everything in our control to promote student success through asset-based thinking, meaning that we have to believe that all of our students, all of our staff, all of our administrators are capable of achieving high expectations. And we've set rigorous goals and high expectations in reading in order to establish a direct connection from the boardroom to the classroom. And so we'll begin the process of identifying the early levels of universal literacy curriculum for our elementary schools this spring, knowing that that is the foundation that many of our students build their success upon is in literacy. Parents and community partners will be essential in supporting our literacy progress. And as we move forward in this work, we are committed to clarity and urgency as we support our staff and our students in the work to meet our literacy and math goals that we set. We will work to evolve our literacy and math instructional models to increase student engagement, our professional learning to bring alignment to the skills development expectations that we're exposing our staff to, add collaboration opportunities to support the range of student needs and in many cases, the wide range of student needs that exist in individual classrooms. With that, I will yield to Director Kiff Meyer to take us through our ACT composite scores.
So the slide that you see is our trend for our ACT composite over the last five years. You can see that we've declined steadily since 2018, 19. We know that these results don't reflect what our potential for our students are and that we've done some systemized analyzing of what specific target areas instructional practice we overall scored low on. And that's going to be a focus as we move into the coming year.
Can you share those areas?
Yeah, I'll get to them.
Thank you.
And then the next slide is basically our score that we scored in each of the specific areas on the ACT. The one that I do want to draw your attention to is our writing score. You notice that it's at a six point two. That's because that's only scored at a twelve is the max score that you can get versus the thirty-six on the other components. And so our goal is to aim for eight because that is proficiency.
Is there a reason behind that? Our writing score or is that acceptable for us, six point two?
Again, proficiency is eight, so that's what we're shooting for. So we're below proficient overall.
The other scores are at a thirty-six.
Yeah, so it's out of a twelve scale.
So putting it on the same graph, I mean, that's what ACT does. So it's all at the same place, but it's a different scale.
Yeah. Yeah. I only specifically ask because I got my kids' I-Rate results, and they knocked it out of the park in all areas except for that piece as well. So I'm like, why does that? And they were like, if we don't do it, whatever. So I just only asked specifically, so there's some sort of correlation popping in my mind between that and this, I guess. But anyhow, thank you.
So where are we performing for our D O Cs? You can see the K one-two chart, and as Dr. Coleman shared earlier, you can see kindergarten and first grade, we're getting back closer to our pre-COVID numbers, but continue to have, we need to continue to put efforts in place to get our kids where we are. You can see this was based on for kindergarten, first and second grade on PALS, and as I said before, PALS has gone away. We put in teaching strategies gold this year for kindergarten, and we're utilizing I-Rate for first, second, and third grade this year. As I said, though, DPI will be giving us a screener that we will be utilizing, and that screener will be used two times a year at 4K and three times a year at kindergarten first and second grade.
So one of the things that'll need to be done back at the Policy and Governance Committee is to be able to review the literacy policy because kindergarten first and second grade was on PALS. So we'll have to make some edits. As soon as we find out what that screener is, then we'll go ahead and make that edit.
And so you can see the, according to what we, the district, what our hope and for where we wanted to be in board policy, our target, and then our trend of where we are. So you can see here that we're slightly above our target. So we did get slightly above, but still have a lot of growth that we want to make. And here you can see the predicted trend in grades three through eight, and here you can see we are below our target. Although we are three percent up from where we were last year, we still did not hit our target yet.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
We had some really engaged and involved community members message us in the last few days, and I appreciate every one of them. One of them, the question I believe was that PALS was a more subjective test than it is objective and possibly allows the teachers who influence the results of that test. I don't know that test off the top. Can you speak to that? Is there any truth to that?
Would you like to speak to this, Dr. Kuhop?
It's not computerized, so I mean, I guess in math, but it is a, it has a formal, it's a formal administration for it, and it gets to, you know, that's the difference between, Dr. Herzak, that's a great question, what's the correlation with forward? Well, these are for the early literacy, those firm foundations before forward starts in third grade. They need these firm foundations, so they're tested for homemic awareness. Do they hear those sounds and words? They're tested on letter identification, those kinds of things. So there is a definite protocol. I trust the professionalism in our teachers, but it is not a computerized program where the, you know, there is a person in between with the protocol.
Okay. I don't think the question is questioning the teachers themselves, it's just making sure that the consistency in the tests and are they consistent across the board because there could be inconsistencies in that, so.
That I would say then, that protocol is consistent across.
Perfect.
And there's tutorials that like they had to do a training prior to getting that test.
Thank you.
Okay. So predicted trend in ELA proficiency, this is the forward exam for grades three through eight. And again, we are not where we need to be. The target is the target, and this is where we want to be. So we have high expectations that we want to put in place so that we can strategically achieve these marks.
Can we go back to that one?
Yeah.
What is your best guess of why we would have gone down this year?
Well, we increased by three percent. However, we did not hit the target.
I'm looking at the target.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was looking at the thirty-one and the thirty point nine. Where we are, so we had a slight increase, but not where we wanted to be. So we really do want students reaching their stretch goals in order to meet the target, and that was not the case.
All right, thank you for covering for me while I got a cough drop. The next slide just highlights where we've been in the recent five years in comparison to the state. And so again, we we are falling short of the mark that we've that we've set, and we know that we have urgent work to do. And you see here, we are with our thirty-three point four proficiency really compared to the state's forty point one. And then if we break that out more by grade, we can see where, you know, just by grade, where we have more work to do. We see eighth grade in this particular cohort has consistently performed higher than the state, and so we see that thirty-nine point four for our eighth grade cohort. But then we also see other grade levels not performing as well as the state three through eight.
And I can share, like at the fourth and fifth grade level, that reflects what we were seeing in I-Rate as well, so it mirrors.
So this slide that you're looking at is ACT aspire and pre-ACT and why they're both on there is the first three measures, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty, twenty-one, and twenty-one, twenty-two was ACT aspire, and last year they switched to pre-ACT. And so that was the first time that our students took that. You can see the good news is that we were up for the first time in a while, so we've trended up three percent from last year and getting closer to our pre-COVID numbers. I know one question is, it's a different test, does that matter? What does that look like? DPI did end up scoring that to do comparables, so they are comparable tests. So that's the good news. On the next slide that you're going to see, when you ask about what have we targeted or what are we specifically looking at when we did the analyzing of the data, you can see that in eleventh grade, though, we only had thirty-four percent of our students proficient for English Language Arts. And so when we did a dive into the analytics of that, we noticed that key ideas and details as well as craft and structure were universally low, and that's something that we can target all the way down into elementary, middle, and high school to be a focus area. Specifically, like working on citing strong textual evidence was a specific area where we scored really low, so we know that that's going to be a focus area as we move forward.
I have a question. It's become fairly commonplace in statistical analysis to talk about, this is accurate within plus or minus, fill in the blank, one point, two points, three points. What would the, what would the number be to fill in the blank on that? I think that's called the standard error, standard error measure.
I can't answer that question, we can look at that though.
Okay. But I also want to say I really appreciate the bar graphs. I just find those easier to read, and I really appreciate the numbers written in on the state so that we don't have to guess by reading between the lines literally, so thank you for that.
So more of the standard deviation.
Thank you, that was the word I was trying to think of. What's the standard deviation? Do we know what that is?
We can get that.
Okay, not to worry, let's not get hung up on that.
I used to be able to do that in my head.
Another time, thanks. I'm concerned, though, about the drop in ELA in grade eleven from twenty twenty to twenty-one and twenty twenty-two to twenty-three, that's a gap of twelve points. That's, to me, is significant.
It is.
Can I ask a question? When I go back to, you said fourth and fifth grade saw the big, maybe the biggest difference in grade level versus us in the state. Is there any, this is not an excuse, but is there any correlation there to that age group being the age group that missed out on the fundamentals in kindergarten, first grade during COVID?
It definitely affected them, but it still is our responsibility.
Yeah, because others have responded, you know, or recovered.
Exactly right.
So whatever, okay.
And that's our need to be able to continue to have stretch goals for those kids because one year of growth isn't enough, right? We need, you know, one and a half, two, in some cases, more than that.
And I know the answer to this, but I'm going to ask, I'm confident that we are reaching out to find out what other districts to collaborate to see, because somehow, somewhere, somebody figured that out, right? And so to see a state average like that, that's an average, so it's much higher than us, so I would assume there are.
Yeah, I would say everybody's working on it. I'm not sure there's a place that's figured it out, but certainly everybody's working on it. And, you know, depending on how your demographics responded.
Sure.
You know, I mean, it's being in different places, Dr. Coleman's got that experience too.
Yeah.
But yeah, certainly the collaboration is ongoing.
Okay.
All right, so the slide that you have here just shows where we are in comparison to neighboring school districts with our percent of students proficient or advanced on the forward ELA exam. And then this slide shows that comparison by year, I'm looking at the, from twenty eighteen to through twenty twenty-three.
So this is our broken out by, for English Language Arts by race and ethnicity for proficiency. I just want to be really clear that this is urgent for all of us. It's very clear that we have work to do in this area. Some of the things that we've already started, which I think is important to address, is at the six, eight, we're field studying a universal curriculum that's been researched based and evidence sourced called StudySync, and so that's the first time we've had a universal research-based curriculum that we're putting into place in a field study. So that's one thing that we're doing. The other thing that we're doing is we're mirroring some of the rapid cycles of improvement with a common formative assessments at six, eight, so that's the first time that our teachers have been not just using the diagnostic from the I-Rate, but taking a strand that they're targeting each month, doing a pre-test and a post-test on that. And we had our first one in October, and the data came back at high school, we've increased proficiency by twelve percent and by middle school by ten percent on that strand that they focused on. And so what we know about that is if we can hit that in the moment, instead of waiting for those long intermittent pieces between the diagnostic, the hope is that we're going to close that gap quicker. So that's one thing that we've, a couple of things that we've already started. When you look at ELA by proficiency of economically disadvantaged versus not disadvantaged, again, I don't think this reflects what we expect our students to do. We believe that all students can have, meet high expectations regardless of socioeconomic status, and so we don't believe that that affects socioeconomic status, should not be the result of our gaps. So we have work to do on that as well.
And you'll see the forward exam also disaggregated by economic status. Mirrors what you saw in the ACT slide. And again, we'll repeat with Jackie, we have eye expectations regardless. We believe all kids can make the achievement and meet targets, so we are working on some plans in place. All right, and then you'll see the forward exam disaggregated by race and ethnicity. Again, we know all students can achieve high levels. We are planning by looking at data with principals, coaches, and teachers to create plans to support students. And in fact, we've, Dr. Kuhop and myself are involved for the last two days, really looking at data very closely with principals and talking about specific students and plans in place in order to make sure that all of our students are having the supports that they need in order to reach the targets we want. Forward exam disaggregated by linguistic diversity. So again, you can see we have, we have some work to do. And again, the work that we are doing is really trying to take a look at all of our students in order to make sure that all kids have the opportunities to have growth and high growth at that.
Can I ask a question about that one? Are there accommodations on the forward exam for students who are not speaking English as their first language? No, there's not, okay.
So is our mark, the amount of kids that we have that are coming to our school district that are just learning how to speak English has increased?
It has.
Right? So and then you can see those results on this. What do, have we figured anything out there? Because what we, don't we have six hundred and, I don't know the number exactly, forty kids that are just learning how to speak English, and they're taking this forward exam, and that says five percent of them are scoring proficient or advanced, right? So that would be five percent of six, thirty is, you know?
So I can speak to like the ACT and the pre-ACT. The fact is that we know our students, if they're newcomers to our country, are not going to probably perform that well, we wouldn't expect them to. I mean, they are just beginning to learn that language, and so there are some pieces in terms of mirroring their ILPs to be able to put in place to support some of that.
And the ILPs are individual learning plans.
That they have as they're coming in. And I think the piece to understand is we really use the access data to help support and guide what instruction that they need because we know that this isn't a really good measure to see where our students are at.
And the access data, can you describe what the access test is?
That's where they're measuring their ability to speak the language on level, so like below a level three on the access test would mean that they're still emerging into the language, and so that's what we would look at to use to guide our instruction.
For English proficiency.
So do they not take the forward exam then if they're at a certain point? They still do?
Yeah.
There's not a lot of opt-out options with state testing.
Yeah, so honestly, that's very impressive for the five percent of students who don't speak English as their first language to be proficient on the ELA portion of the forward exam. I mean, I'd love to see that gap closed, but I also just recognize that that is impressive to be proficient and not have English be your language that you're proficient in.
I just don't think most of the community has any idea how many kids we have in our school district that are just learning how to speak English, and then they're also taking these same exams, and that's not an excuse at all, and we should never use that one, but I just, that's just kind of why I wanted to bring that up, you know?
What are we up to, sixty-one languages, different languages spoken?
More than that, I think.
Yeah, over sixty.
Sixty-three now? We had that conversation earlier this year, was it like sixty, right?
Right, yeah. And then the forward exam disaggregated by disabilities versus our students without disabilities, and again, this is a really big gap that we need to definitely get behind. And so again, this was. Some of the work that we've been doing is really to take a very close look at the data and at every school and classrooms and how we can get behind so that we do not continue to see this.
Past slides are the number of students we have with disabilities is increasing every year as well, too, you know, so it's important work that we figure both those.
It is really important.
So this is mirroring the forward data as well. This is the ACT proficiency for ELA for students with disabilities versus without disabilities. Again, I want to be really clear that the expectation and what we're aiming for is that all students should be able to achieve, and for students with disabilities should be achieving with accommodations and modifications to support what they need to reach that level. And so that's the area that we need to be working on. And one of the things that we've been pushing and continue to push is making sure that we're reducing the amount of pullout instruction that our students are receiving so that they are getting grade level instruction within the classroom. So moving to that co-plan, the co-serve, the co-learn model is where we're continuing to push forward in the district. We have a long way to go, but we are making strides in that direction because we know that's how the gap is going to close.
Dr. Herzak?
Thank you, I have a question, a couple of questions on this slide. When we talk about students with disabilities, what disabilities are we talking about?
Anyone with a five oh four or an IED.
So that would include students with learning disabilities, students with intellectual disabilities, students with speech and learning, speech and hearing issues.
Emotional behavioral disabilities.
All of those.
Okay.
Has there been some study or correlation done then with the IEPs or the 504 plans and their student performance on the exams?
What we have looked at with the IEP piece is we've looked at like trying to minimize the pull-out instruction and really lifting up what we look at universal for, for all our students and not just saying because a student had it in elementary that they need pull-out instruction in middle school. So we're trying to narrow that gap piece. But in terms of specific correlation, I can't answer that piece.
Okay. And then just an observation, it's concerning to me that the students without disabilities have declined 14.6 points over a three-year period. That, I think that deserves some further analysis.
And that's reflected, that's reflected, that's where the reduction was in our aggregate, you know, overall, because that's the majority of our students, so.
Can you tell me the percentage of students that are special education in our district?
It's right around 16.
16, yeah.
And that's, that's IEP and 504? Or is that just IEP?
It's 1,600 and something.
1,492.
1,492?
Yeah, that's, that's, that's good, yeah.
Are there any other questions on the literacy portion? Because the next section is regarding mathematics.
I guess I do have a question looking at the next slide, which is the mathematics goals. We did skip that for the literacy, slide 20, page 20. So I don't know if you wanna hit that right now before we go to the math goals.
Nope, one more back.
All right, so I'll just.
Oh, no, no. I saw you go past it. Go to 20. Oh, I thought it was 21, sorry.
So our, our goals that were set in the policy was, whereby 2025, 75% of students kindergarten through second grade would meet spring level benchmarks, as evidenced by PALS. By 2025, 45% of students in grades three through eight would be proficient or advanced in literacy, as evidenced by the forward exam. By 2025, 60% of students in grades three through eight would be proficient or advanced in reading, according to iReady. And then the reading literacy goals, not in policy, and then by 2025, 50% of students in grades nine through 11 would be proficient in literacy, as evidenced by the pre-ACT and ACT.
Can I ask, I know when the policy committee's gonna review this because we're gonna have to change the wording because it says PALS. Could there also be a discussion on why the pre-ACT and ACT were not included in those literacy goals?
Yeah, that's something that we can evolve to. So yeah, I mean, this, this was the initial policy that we put together. I think in that discussion, we had talked about, as we come to review this, you know, let's take a look at scaling that up. So yeah, certainly, I think that'd be a good conversation for policy governance.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you for going back to that slide.
Thank you, Dr. Brown. And I will ask for Director Cole to join us for the mathematics portion.
Okay, so math goals, again, these are not in board policy, but these are the goals set forth by the school district. So looking at our students in grades three through 11, we would like to see 50% of them proficient or advanced on forward exam for grades three through eight and pre-ACT and ACT for nine through 11. And then by 2025, 62% of students in grades three through eight should be proficient or advanced in math, as evidenced by iReady. So this slide shows the targets that were set based on our, our district schools and where we are. So last year, even though we increased a little bit in our proficiency, we fell short of our goal. This is our highest score since the pandemic. And even though we fell short of our goal, I think it's important to emphasize that we are not moving those targets. Like that is where we want our students to go, and that is, and that is where we need to go. So this year, our special education and our ESOL teachers have joined our regular education teachers for collaboration and professional development with a focus on the Bridges Intervention Components in our Bridges Math Program. We have also this year identified and are tracking commitive formative assessments for elementary math so that we're not waiting for just the three times a year that students take the iReady because then that data doesn't help us to be as responsive as being able to track the more regular Common Formative Assessments. So the forward exam data, so this is forward exam for grades three through eight. Here we notice consistency between the iReady and the forward exam scores. So we do know that the iReady is helpful in allowing us to predict how we will perform on the forward exam. Again, we fell short of our goal, slight increase in our results. So that is definitely something we need to work on. Here's the trend in math proficiency compared with ASKAS compared to the state on the forward exam. So again, that's grades three through eight. So you can see that we continue to lag behind the state. We have conducted an analysis of the skills that our students are struggling with most, and our coaching cycles and professional development are focused on building those skills. In third grade, the focus strands are algebraic relationships. And in fourth and fifth grade, fractions have risen as one of those big priorities. So this shows the, basically the breakdown compared to the state by grade level. So again, in most grade levels, we lag the state.
Can I ask a really stupid question? So when they're doing fractions, are they just doing fractions? Or have we converted it into the fraction can be any fraction as long as everyone's happy with the fraction? I mean, are we teaching multiplication tables and some basics? Or are we teaching, I, I don't know exactly what I'm talking about, but a far-out kind of math that they just don't know the answer to it?
So, I could talk about that for a long time. So the fraction instruction as part of the Bridges Program is very comprehensive as far as using multiple models for students to represent fractions. So like looking at fractions on a clock, looking at fractions within like our money system, looking at fractions as like sets and groups, looking at fractions as arrays. And so the students explore and look at those and represent those in multiple ways. So it's less about like memorizing a process and more about them having a deep understanding of what a fraction really represents and then being able to solve, you know, problems and tasks based on that.
But are they?
Are they? Well, that's a skill that they definitely have to work on. Absolutely.
It's just interesting.
So this slide is the, what our ninth and 10th graders take. And again, it was ACT Aspire for the first three cycles, and then pre-ACT was the last one. Again, not a huge celebration. We've been pretty consistent since COVID and slightly above, just slightly above the state here. The focus areas that we've been able to break down for pre-ACT and ACT are integrating essential skills. So that's really about how well students can apply their understanding and skills to solve the problem. So again, like not just memorizing, but how do you apply what you're need to, for the application? And then preparing higher math is another component that we need to be looking at, and that's using our algebra and solving equations. We, we struggle a lot in that area. We know that that needs to get pushed down to the middle school to be a focus area because our ninth graders do struggle with algebra. And then our last area of focus is demonstrating knowledge of real and complex number systems such as integers and rational exponents. So those are some target areas that math is focusing on this year. This slide is showing our actual ACT data for proficiency in math. Again, not a huge celebration when you're just slightly above the state at 20% here. We do continue to trend down, but I do believe that our potential is to achieve higher than this, and that's our goal.
All right, this slide just shows where the ASKAS area school district is when we look at our ACT math scores in comparison to the state and our neighboring districts. So that is positioned there in order.
So I know earlier, Mr. Carnes noted, you know, finding out what neighboring districts are doing. I just want to give a shout out to Amro because I think that is very impressive to raise your math scores 10 points from pre-COVID. So I would love for us to figure out what it is that Amro's doing. Maybe it's a simple answer, maybe it's something big, I don't know.
Jay Jones.
Oh, yeah. Yes, we're, we're gonna collaborate with all of them.
Thanks. I just, that's what, that's what stood out to me when I looked at that data is you look at how many districts have gone back to where they were pre-COVID. And most of them are about where they were around COVID. And Amro just stands out when you look at that.
Just some additional comparisons. The, this slide just shows where neighboring districts were year to year from 2018 to 2023 in the math achievement on the forward exam. All right, so as we.
So I'm probably gonna sound like a broken record here now when we're talking about just our, our achievement gaps. So this is forward exam for our students who receive special education services versus students who do not. So just like in literacy, we're seeing large gaps here that need to be addressed.
And I'm gonna mirror what the forward exam data shares as well. This is our ACT proficiency for students without disabilities versus with disabilities. There's a large gap, as you can see. And again, a lot of that comes down to foundational skills that they don't have coming into high school. And so we have to really be meeting those stretch goals earlier on so that we can target this gap and end up closing this at a higher rate.
I have a question about special ed. Do you have any idea how this compares to the state average? I know that's one of the things that Dr. Davis is trying to do is get more funding for special ed and would increase funding help with this situation. So I'm just wondering how it relates to the state. Is the state seeing the same averages for special ed students?
The, the gaps are certainly significant, and the gaps are large, even at the state level. We can provide a, a specific information just on what that looks like, but I will say that, yes, even at the state level, the gaps are significant.
Okay. Thank you.
So this is our forward exam data when you look at our students who are linguistically diverse and being served by our ESOL program versus our, our English proficient students. And then forward exam disaggregated by students who live in households that are considered economically disadvantaged versus non-economically disadvantaged. Again, we see wide gaps in our data.
This is the ACT math proficiency by economically disadvantaged versus not economically disadvantaged. Again, mirrors the same as forward. We do see large gaps. We know that this isn't acceptable, and we do have to raise the bar and really believe that all of our students can achieve at a high level, and that is our targeted goal through our supports of the analyzing of our data as well.
This is the forward exam data disaggregated by race and ethnicity. So you can see the comparisons between the different years for how our students are performing. So again, just in general, in regards to our gaps for, in all of those areas, you know, the key is like really working with individual schools, grade levels, and classrooms to really use data and use that data to really drive and inform instruction. So again, putting the commitive informative assessments in place really helps us to kind of have a more regular check-in on how our students are performing. Obviously, these things, they take once a year, and so this is very lagging data, but being able to identify what are the areas our students are struggling with most, emphasizing those in the classroom and with our professional development and coaching, and then looking at the, the day-to-day formative assessment data that, that we are collecting to be responsive to students' needs.
This is segregation by race and ethnicity. And just like all of our gaps that we've talked about, this is hard data to look at. It's not something that we're proud of because those data points are children in our community, and we really need to be focusing and challenging and leaning into this so that we can be strategic to work to shift this, this vantage point to where we know our kids should be achieving.
All right, we just close with how we started. There are some examples of growth that we see throughout our district, but tonight's presentation is not to forget or to dismiss that, but certainly not to underscore that our overall results do not reflect our potential. And they certainly do not reflect what we consider to be acceptable. And so with clarity and urgency, we are pressing forward to address what I would call urgent matters that exist within our district, within our curriculum, within our instructional practices, within our structures for support. And we look forward to coming back with more celebrations with the implementation of those strategies.
Sam, I think maybe to save yourself a lot of questions from this board, in our listening session, we talked about some changes, and I don't care if you talk about each one, but we talked about a plan that Sam is implementing currently and will continue to implement. And I wish you'd share with the board some of those things because I think, I think we need to hear that there is a plan and that we are going to succeed.
Absolutely. So one of the, the more visible changes that have occurred, that has occurred in our school district is the change in structure and support within our district office, and our district offices deployed to provide support at the school level. And so with that, we have increased accountability in the form of support to our school leaders and to the teams that we have in place to provide instruction for, for all of our students. So this new structure within our district office, and then also restructuring how support looks at schools as a way to increase impact at our school levels. Also increasing student engagement so that our classrooms provide more opportunities for students to practice and apply the skills and concepts that they're working on. So that looks like more targeted small group instruction, more student discourse, and really high-quality student engagement in the classrooms. Increasing rigor. And so grade-level instruction at all, in all of our classrooms and across all of our grades so that students have the opportunity to engage with grade-level standards, grade-level texts in all of their classrooms, even if we know that, that these are students who might experience struggles. We don't wanna lower the bar. We wanna increase the support so that students can reach a high bar. So we'll see some very specific changes in our literacy program or universal literacy program, K through eighth grade. As Director Kiffmeyer mentioned, we have the, our field test phase right now of our literacy programming in grades six through eight. And we'll come back to the board in the spring to talk about where we are and what our processes are for literacy. And so as we align our processes processes and align our practices so that what we see working or where we see students successful in pockets, we want to scale that across our system through more strategic alignment. And so as we take a strategic approach to change management, we know that we cannot prioritize 20 things and expect that all 20 of those things will be done well. So we're being very clear about what our priorities are and then taking a very thoughtful change management approach to the systemic evolutions that we're making over time. So the pace that we'll move at honors and reflects the urgency, but we're being laser-focused on the priorities that we discussed this evening so that there's no question in anybody's mind what our areas of focus are and then what the strategies are to be employed across our system, across every classroom, so that all students can thrive.
Thank you. Open it up for questions, comments?
Dr. Herzog.
I have some too. I had to breathe first.
I'm willing to defer to others. I don't want to shut down conversation about this. I've given a lot of attention and thought to this report, and there are very few times that I cry. One is at weddings, when the bride is coming down the aisle. I'm usually not moved to tears over data, but these data move me to tears. Okay, I'll go on. First of all, I've tried to synthesize a variety of thoughts. So not only was I moved to tears, but there aren't many nights where I can say I didn't sleep a wink, but there were a couple of things going on over the weekend, and there was one night I didn't sleep at all. And part of the reason was these data. I have the utmost respect for you, Mr. Coleman. Your report shares data that were not created under your watch. I see you more as the messenger. There have been other people in this district who have been responsible for our curriculum and instruction and assessment efforts, and I've heard over the last 10 years on multiple occasions, we have a plan or we're working on this. Well, I think we're at a point where the board needs to be more assertive in terms of its accountability. As a board, I've recently had a conversation with one of the lead attorneys of the Wisconsin Association of School Boards who reminded me of two major responsibilities of the board. One is accountability, and the other is fiduciary, which is the financial end of things, but that also involves accountability. And the recent WASB Fall Conference just held over the weekend in Green Lake also emphasized the role of the board in terms of accountability. I've also shared with the board that during my campaign trail efforts in the spring, I heard from a lot of people about a greater interest in accountability, believing that, yes, our students have great potential, but we're not there. Over the years that I've served on the board, the administration has asked for the following resources: continuing an elementary reading coordinator, but adding a secondary reading coordinator, adding behavioral interventionists, adding tech coaches, adding reading teachers at the elementary level, adding math coaches at the elementary level, adopting a reading curriculum, adopting curriculum materials, providing professional development for our teachers, making sure that our principals know what to observe and then how to coach teachers in the teaching of these areas, adding a dean of students at Merrill Elementary School, giving a longer period of instruction for reading at the elementary level, and making pay adjustments for two members of the curriculum department last year. So we've had all these requests for support, and we've honored everything, but our results aren't even back to the pre-COVID levels. I find that unacceptable. But I would quickly acknowledge that this is probably the first time in my tenure on the board and that of anyone around the table because, other than Mrs. DeWitt, who was only elected in the spring, all of the rest of us have had this sort of report in 2021, 2022. And this is the first time, I would say, that I've sensed more urgency in addressing needs. I've heard the phrase repeatedly, "This needs to be addressed. Results are not acceptable." And I agree with those, but the board has not seen concrete plans for how we're going to do that. And I think that's part of where my frustration lies. And then in listening to some parents who have come forward and have told us for several years, and there was a class at West High School that I got involved with a couple of years ago where the kids are out in the community working for part of the day, and then they come in to the school for the other part of the day, their reading level isn't such that when we talk about having kids be college, career, and community ready, they're not. They're not. I respect the courage of all of us, especially Dr. Coleman, to be the messenger tonight and to acknowledge that we're falling short. But it's not just the curriculum team, however we define that, it's the board, and we have to take responsibility for demanding more accountability. John Ashley, recently retired from the Wisconsin Association of School Boards, had stated on more than one occasion in the Wisconsin School News, the WASB publication, "We have a moral obligation to educate all students." These data would suggest we're not doing that. Not only suggest, they point that out. In January of 2023, at the State Education Convention, success stories were gathered from WASB consultants around the state and from the Wisconsin School News on districts that had gotten back to or exceeded pre-COVID levels of achievement. So they're out there, and we can learn from them. As I talk with school board members from other districts in the spring, they were very excited about some of the things they were implementing in summer school to try to reach the students who were underperforming, those who were not proficient. I didn't hear that conversation in our district. It seemed like business as usual for our summer school. We've heard examples from about high school graduates who cannot get into a tech college because they don't have the language proficiency or they don't have the math proficiency. We need to double down on our efforts, and I try to be patient. I pray for patience just about every day, and sometimes it works and sometimes it doesn't. But I am more impatient than ever regarding these data. So this is my request for a future agenda item, that we double down on our improvement efforts. I'm asking for action plans that will detail who, what, and when to be delivered to the board in 60 days. That would be the beginning or toward the end of January, based on the recent staff reports on suspension data, DEI trainings, and tonight's academic performance. Administration could take what was summarized in the reports under such things as opportunities for improvement, but I really see a sense of urgency here like I've never seen before, and we cannot continue as business as usual of having administration tell us year after year, "We have a plan. We're working on this." Then we come back a year later, and the achievement gaps are still in the 20% to 40% range. That's not right. We owe it to the students, we owe it to the parents, and we owe it to this community to double down and see better results. And I'm confident with the plan you and I had talked about, and it sounds like you shared at the listening session, that this can be done. I'm not asking for changes to be made in 60 days. I'm asking to see a plan. We've been told as a board, "Oh, we have a plan for DEI at every school." We have never seen those. Or, "We have a plan to improve the scores at the schools." The board has never seen those. We have to do something different because we see the results of what without those plans. So to me, there's got to be more of a sense of urgency, and we need to see something in 60 days as to what is going to happen because we cannot come back here, whether it's suspension data or academic data or DEI efforts in six and 12 months, and see the same thing because that's essentially what's gone on for 10 years. We've heard the frustration of a number of parents. And so something has to change. We have to transform this, and we can. Other districts do it. And I have the greatest confidence that we have the right leader in the Assistant Superintendent of Instruction position to move that department along and achieve the results that our kids deserve and that their potential suggests they have. As I said, I'm more emotional tonight than I usually am, but I care about these kids so much. I've never was blessed with children or grandchildren of my own, and I've always thought of the kids in this district and those trick-or-treaters who came to my house recently as our kids, and I care deeply about them. Thank you. Thank you.
Does Mary have a comment?
Mrs. Carlin. I have also lost sleep over this data, and I'm incredibly frustrated. And those of us that have been on the board for five years or more, I'm kind of embarrassed. I feel like we have not held up our part of the bargain in making this district accountable for these scores. And to say these scores are disappointing is an understatement. I don't even know where to begin, really, and I think it's unfortunate that the people that are presenting this data had absolutely nothing really to do with the results because they're all new in their positions. If this was a company and we were performing at this level with these numbers, somebody would lose their job because these numbers are not acceptable. I'm not suggesting that anybody lose their job, but I would like to echo Dr. Herzog's request for more accountability. I would like to know, if we do not meet our goals, what happens? What are we going to do? Because we've been giving lip service to, "Oh, it's COVID. Oh, it's a new superintendent. It's a new this." No more excuses. I agree with Dr. Herzog. We have provided resources as requested. We have done all that we can do, but now it's time for us to be accountable. And so I will be looking forward to the 60-day plan that Dr. Herzog has suggested. I think that's a great starting point. And I'm also open to having a conversation or a workshop on what the board can do to help move the needle because we are not moving the needle, and that's not okay. Thank you.
One thing that I suggested during the listening session is that we continue to get the community involved. We can't do this without the community. They are an essential part of this, whether you have children in school, don't have children in school, are a parent, a non-parent. Our taxpayers, our community has invested a lot in our facilities, and we hope they continue to do so in the future. But to do that in good faith, we have to show them that we have results that'll make it worthwhile. So I suggested to Dr. Coleman that when we put together Barb's 60-day plan, it's something we share with our community so everyone in this community is on the same page. It should be, in my opinion, accessible on the website. It should be the talk of the town, much like Mobile, Alabama, when we did Oshkosh for Education in Mobile, Alabama. Every single person in that community, from the cab driver to the person at the hotel to the gentleman from Boeing and the cable company, everybody had the same plan for education in Mobile, Alabama. And that's what I would like to see here. Dr. Herzog is right. We have reached a point of no return, and we have everything in place to make it better. And I have every confidence in this, in our superintendent and the team he has compiled to do everything we're talking about. Mrs. Selashy.
Yeah. I just want to echo that. One of my thoughts today is this feels like something so urgent that it has to involve the whole community. And when this data was released, I looked at it on the WISE dashboard, and we can also find this data for some of the school choice students in our community who attend private schools, and it's not that different at that school. And so I would just add that I view this as a community thing. It's not just the public school leadership that needs to take this on. It's the whole community. So I echo that. Interesting enough, today, though, I did have a colleague share that they had an ACT score of 14, and I think it's important to point out that this is an individual who graduated college, who has a successful career. So I just feel a need to, as disappointed as I am in this data, to also make it clear that our students are so much more than their test scores. That students who are not proficient, while we are concerned about them and we want them to be proficient, it is not something that defines them or their future. Similarly, I was at the Wisconsin School Counselors Association convention last week, and one of the guest speakers mentioned that he had like a 1.3 GPA in high school, and he's now a published author. So again, these two stories have stood out to me as we've looked at this data, and I just wanted to be clear that the students who are basic and below basic are represented by those two stories shared with me recently, and there's absolutely opportunity for success for all of our students. I know that.
Let me look at some of my other notes. So those are the two things that are the top of my mind. I know I emailed Dr. Coleman some questions today that I wanted to be sure to discuss. I really appreciated that we compared our forward exam results with neighboring districts. Like I said, for me, that was just data that stood out, and I would love in the future to see that also included the ACT. I don't know if we have the availability to do that, but that was something I'd love to see in the future is how we compare with our neighboring districts on the ACT. Do you have it?
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
It's been a while since I've passed a Q.
Is this the exam?
Do you need a copy of this?
You're doing very well. Thank you. Thank you. Yes. 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 Thank you. I know I just sent this email this morning because I look over the board information on Tuesdays when I don't have class in the daytime.
What you can see is that it's pretty comparable to most areas around the state average, other than Kimberly, Winnicott, and Nina are above the average. But we're pretty comparable to the other districts within our area.
Thank you for getting that. What stood out to me especially, like was looking at the COVID impact. And in ELA, it seems like all our neighboring districts are still struggling and lagging behind where we were before COVID. But something seems to have happened in math, where the other districts seem to have gone back too close to where they were around the 2019 scores. And I just, I don't have an answer to this, but I just wondered, like, what do we make of that, that other districts have been able to recover their math loss and we still have not? That's what struck my mind is about the community because I just thought, I think to me, that shows like it's a community thing that we need to take on. I don't know if anyone has any answers to that. I mean, it's kind of rhetorical, but I just want to know what we make of that. Which I guess kind of leads to my third thing, which was, at what point do we look for a new tier-one math curriculum? And for people not in the field of education, tier-one just means the universal instruction that's taught to all students in the classroom. But I also wonder, maybe the problem isn't with our tier-one math curriculum. Maybe it's our tier-two and three, which are like the interventions for students who need more support in math. I'm curious to know if we have an idea of which of those levels it is.
For elementary or...
Yeah. Yeah. Yes, I was looking specifically the forward, the comparison to neighboring districts on the forward exam. So yeah, elementary and middle school.
So our elementary universal curriculum or the universal resource that we have is Bridges. And so that is something that we're really focusing our professional development around, like really using, implementing that Bridges program with integrity. I don't have the data in front of me, but I know Julie Holmes, our math coordinator, had, did a study, it was pre-COVID, when we first, in the first three years of implementing the Bridges program. And the teachers that were implementing the components, the way they were intended to be implemented, definitely got better results. And so that's where our coaching efforts have been, have been put. In addition, starting last spring and into this year, all of our teachers K through five are engaging in a book study of the book Taking Action. And it was written by the National Council for the Teaching of Mathematics. And it's just, it's based on a lot of research about math learning and conceptual learning and best practice in mathematical instruction. And so that book study, when you, when, like, I have been reading that book now because I'm learning now along in my new position, but it very, very closely aligns. It's almost like the Bridges program was written in alignment with that book. It wasn't, but it really closely aligns with the practices that are recommended as the research-based best practices in math. Now, one thing that we potentially are looking at is the Bridges program is coming out with a third edition. And the third edition is supposed to be more user-friendly for the teacher. It streamlines some things like maintaining the integrity of the best practices, but really makes it more user-friendly. And then there is also a much more robust equity component in the Bridges III. So there have been giraffes of that, that our math coordinator has been looking at and we are going to be discussing the potential of piloting that Bridges III program in some of our classrooms. So that's something that we would bring forward to our education committee, most likely in December for discussion. So.
Thank you. That was really helpful. I know we have focused a lot on literacy and our literacy curriculum and our literacy professional development and so that's, which, part of that has been driven by me. I'll admit that. That was something I was really passionate about when I joined the board four and a half years ago. And now, as I said, after seeing this report, I'm like, okay, we need to make sure our math is getting the attention that it needs. So thank you.
And we do know that, you know, students who have stronger literacy skills, I mean, that impacts every other area as well.
Right.
Math is very language-based. There's a lot of, you know,
Word problems.
Language and word, you know, word story problems and things like that in math as well. So.
And then the last thing I want to say is just that I am really excited about the spring. I have to find it on my slide, but let me pull it up. That the district will be in the process of identifying a universal literacy curriculum for our elementary schools this spring. I, like I said, when I joined the board four and a half years ago, that was something I was really passionate and opinionated about and I have always stated that I would support that if we ever made that decision. So I just want to say thank you to coming to that decision. I, gosh, I was going to ask my child for permission to share this and I forgot to, but I have a child who is on the dyslexia spectrum and I strongly believe that a different curriculum will better serve our students who experience dyslexia and dysgraphia. And I have children who are not on that spectrum and who I still think would benefit from a new curriculum. So thank you for that. And that is all my comments.
Mr. Current.
I appreciate Lizzie sharing that about, you know, your child. My two boys, one is in high school, one is in middle school. They've always been behind when it came to literacy. So this, it's personal, you know, and so. Dr. Davis, you said something a while back, a few meetings ago, that I actually wrote down at work because I thought it was important. This information can refine us, does not define us. And I think that's the opportunity that we have to see. I was really proud of our board in June. We had that meeting about this information and we get, this is from spring of 2023. It's not this school year currently, so it's important to know that we're halfway to the next test already. But there was a change in our board at that time, the feeling of accountability that we all felt. And it was, you know, it's important. And I appreciate the honesty tonight sharing it. It's also important to understand, just to highlight, the organizational changes that have happened since that data was taken. You know, so the real test of this is going to be this next test and the next test. And we're going to need to see real evidence of those changes. Because as we all know, those are, those are students on those data points, right? So, you know, knowing that, Dr. Davis, you had updated the administrative organizational chart. We have new people in places. We saw the difference and it's important to understand what equity means, right? Equity is not black and white. Equity is race, ethnicity, socioeconomic status. It's special education and it's so much more, right? So the board has invested and came back very solidly. And it's also part of our board understanding what our roles are as well. Approving Anthony Miller Jr. and Dr. Sam Coleman to their positions. Like, it's important for us to understand what that means, right? Everything that we do, the decisions that we make ultimately impact what happens in the classrooms. Our decisions to add an assistant principal at Merrill to help with support that matters in the classroom. Our decisions for the referendum when it comes to the tax levy, the ability to update buildings, the ability to not have a math, or different teachers going to two or three schools in one day. So the part of this whole plan that we have in place for the referendum and for the new buildings down the road, it all leads back to this point, to literacy, right? That doesn't mean we can't see evidence of it changing now, but that is the plan. It all matters. When we talk about the tax levy, it impacts literacy scores. When we talk about the next phase of the referendum, it's literacy scores. The ultimate equity work, in my opinion, we talked about the DEI position months ago, was literacy scores. That's the end game. So I think from our standpoint, we need to hold people accountable, but also understand what our roles are when we decide and vote as to what we're doing on our board. When we decided that DEI position, we talked about, you know, at that board meeting, I don't know, February, March, in 21, 22, there were zero black students who took AP classes. It was eye-opening. That was disappointing. And so I think seeing some of the data that goes with that, you know, that was a moment for me to understand that we have to do things differently. And so that is the challenge and obviously the three of you specifically sitting there, were not a part of that previously, but that is the charge going forward as to this has to look different. And I trust Dr. Davis in your leadership and where you're going. And you've asked during your interview, and we've said this before, you said you want it done. You put it in my review. We've done it. It's in policy. It's on your review. Ultimately, we talk about accountability. That's where it is. And I appreciate Dr. Herzog and it's emotional, right? It's students. It's my kids and it's more than just that. It's the people who are in the audience who, I say audience as if we have a big audience, but you know, you know, who spoke about it, who I've talked to many times, like, this matters. And so it's important though, as we continue on to understand how we, what the next steps are in this. Just looking at my notes, make sure I didn't miss anything. Dr. Coleman, you were brought in as the expert in this. This is, this is your area of expertise. You've lived this. You've been a part of this. Very simply, seeing where we are now, I mean, you hit the ground running. You were prepared. I've talked to you. You came in knowing what you were a part of and where you were going in this community. Seeing what you see right now, is there anything in your brain that doesn't think we can get there?
I have absolutely no doubt that we can hit the goals that we've set and exceed them within the timeline that we set. I also don't want to underscore or under, I want us to underestimate what that takes because those are very ambitious goals and it is going to require that we fundamentally and structurally do something different. So we can, we can get there and we have a courageous team that is digging in right now and continuing to, we'll get where we want to get, but it is not by keeping on, keeping on.
I mean, that's what we want to hear, right? That things got to change. They have to look different. And Dr. Davis, the thing we've said before is, what does that mean for us? You have to invest in your people to get results. I firmly believe that, right? And so what does that mean from us? Like, when you guys start doing this, last year when we did, you know, the enrollment numbers changed, staff shifted around, we didn't add much more to that literacy. I think it was one and a half literacy coaches maybe ultimately. But like, what does that look like more? And I challenge all of you to understand, what does that look like? Maybe that's more of them. Maybe it's in different places. Maybe it's the curriculums. Maybe it's whatever. We've said in education committee when we discussed this originally, that nothing is off the table. And I just want to make sure that that's still the message, that nothing is off the table. So I, what everyone said, I thank you for the presentation. It's difficult to give it, but I have the faith that you will get it done and I thank you for the presentation tonight.
Dr. Davis, would you like to say anything?
Yeah, so one, again, I want to, I want to thank the board just for, you know, the honesty and the empathy and also just the urgency behind, like, this is the most important work that we need to do. And I said as part of my interview, accountability, I lean into accountability. That's the only way that we get better and making sure that, again, that refines us. So what are our actions, how do our actions change as part of that process? And I mean strategically, we've built a team. We've built a very strong team with a new structure to be able to support buildings in spaces and developed 20 key performance indicators across this system, adopted policy at a literacy level to set our goals. I've talked to people that have worked here for 30, 35 years, like, that's never been done before, right? And so now our ability is to be able to work through, being able to take from that policy standpoint and be able to execute then at a building level. Very important process for us to be able to work through on that. So, so again, I appreciate the opportunity to be able to, you know, be supported, to be able to come up with plans. We will bring resources forward in the spring, so I can assure you of that. I appreciate the, you know, allowing us to have everything on the table. I think that's helpful from a leadership standpoint. And also recognizing that our teachers and our principals and our paras and our custodians are working hard every day, right? Working hard on behalf of our students and that it's our job from a leadership standpoint administratively to put them in better positions, to be able to provide stronger support and to make sure that we can all succeed because that's what I'm convinced of. Again, and Dr. Coleman talked about this, like, these are structural systemic issues that you've seen changes on over the last six months. You'll continue to see those in the next six months. I can assure you of that. What that looks like, we're working through some of those details, but that will, that will occur. And so I think it's also important to be mindful as we're looking at, you know, our change process that we're also working with humans, that in managing that change process is really important. That's been the grounding of our training administratively for the last two years, is how do you manage the change process? So everything that we've done over the last couple of years really has been to position us to be successful in this next stage. So I don't mind at all being accountable for the results. Not happy with where we are certainly, but encouraged by the team and the structures that you've allowed us to be able to put in place as we're moving forward. I do however, need just some clarity on scope for putting together 60-day plans. So that lands us at January 10th to come up with a plan or plans for the who, what, and when. Anybody who shows up on that plan is going to have to be communicated with clearly and understand what their role is on that plan, if that's going to be a public document, which it sounded like that was where we were heading. So I need some clarity on scope because we can't tackle everything in the next 60 days.
Can I ask a clarifying question on that? Dr. Herzog, do you want that to come to education committee first to get a feel for that? To like run it through what you're discussing?
I think that would be appropriate given our committee structure and I'm willing to lean into pushing that to the second meeting in January where we typically don't have a staff report, but I think this could take up a fair amount of time. But I think it's important that we have action plans. We have to go beyond. We have a plan. We're going to do this. We're going to do that. Okay, but who's going to do what by when? And I think I would be satisfied with administration, particularly Dr. Coleman and his team and Mr. Miller, he doesn't have, well, I guess he has a team. Mr. Miller and his team, maybe taking the reports, the suspension data report, the DEI report and where it says we're going to do this, we're going to do that. Okay, put the who, what, and how with those, or who, what, and when with those. And if you want to limit the number, I'm okay with that, but I'd like to see some concrete examples of what we're going to do and what we can expect as a board moving forward.
So from a, again, just getting at scope, so from a data standpoint, we're really looking at the suspension data and then literacy data and math? Or, I'm just trying to get a feel for, in mostly, like, we need to be, I just want to make sure it's meaningful, it's concise, it's transparent. So for that.
I'm not looking for eight pages or 140 slides. I'm only looking for, okay, so the suspension data, the suggestions that were put forth by Dr. Coleman, what are we, who's going to do what by when in terms of what was in that report saying we're going to do this, we have plans for that? Give us the specifics in terms of an action plan. Same with math. There were a number of suggestions. Some of them were listed as opportunities for improvement or next steps, however you label them. But where you say we have a plan or we're going to do this or we need more, we need to do more with this. Pick out maybe four or five of those and tell us specifically what's going to happen, what we can expect as a board. Okay, I'm not looking for 20 activities. That's unreasonable. And our teachers are overworked as it is. They don't need any more. You know, they don't need another 20 or 40 goals from the school board. That's not what I'm suggesting. To me, the responsibility here is on administration. What are you, what is administration going to do? Who, the who, what, and when to move us forward in these areas?
I haven't.
Understood.
Okay.
Oh, go ahead. Sorry.
Oh, okay. I haven't got to speak on this yet, but.
Can I, I'm sorry, can I?
Yes.
So just for clarity, again, the, so the actions, the administrators will put together the plan, right? So the, when you're, when you're thinking about like the, when those actions would be taken, like, what's the timeline? So I understand it's in January, we'll come up with the action plan. Are those actions that will be expected or that we would work through for the second semester? Or is it quarterly?
Could be beyond, it could be second semester and beyond. I'm just trying to find an example here.
Yeah, Dr. Herzog, what I'm understanding is you believe there is already a plan in place. You want to see it communicated out.
I want to see it communicated out, so.
It sounds like it was talked about at the meeting tonight, the listening session, right? So that could be something as simple as what's already together.
Dr. Coleman has a plan.
Exactly.
So that might be as simple as.
It's.
We want to know how.
We want to know how.
We know when we want to accomplish and we want to know why we want to accomplish. We want to know how.
Understood and we can do that. There's a thousand different ways to be able to like slice that. So I just want to make sure the seven of you are on the same page, that we're putting together action plans that we would expect. Looking at the scope, because I can do a, we can do a quarterly, we can do a semester, we can do a one-year, we can do a three-year, we can do a five-year. So what I, what I want to make sure that in our process, when we come back, we're all in agreement of what we're going to see and then who's going to be, we'll determine who's going to be a part of that and communicate that out. I just don't want this to be ambiguous because that's going to create more issues than we currently. We have actions that are going on, right? Like, we can, we can, if it's a matter of synthesizing that into a document to be able to show the board. If I know that it's a second semester, what's going to happen? board, if I know that it's a second semester, what's going to happen the second semester, then that's what I need to know, and I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page.
And some of that within 60 days may have already been implemented, but we just want to see what that is, right? We want to see, so I don't know that, I wouldn't think of it as a timeframe thing, it's just what is happening now.
I would see it as a timeframe in the sense that we have goals that take us to 2026.
Sorry, I saw your face when I said that, I wasn't.
No, that's why I want to make sure we're all on the same page.
What is, yeah.
So is it what we're doing now, is it what we're doing for second semester? So what I'm hearing is that we want some actions that we're going to do over the second semester to be able to move us forward on our suspension data, our literacy and our math data, like that's what I heard.
I would say that's fine.
If we can have agreement around that scope, then, again, I just want to make sure that we're settling on that before, because there's a lot of, obviously, a lot of work and a lot of people that'll be involved in that, so I just want to make sure that we can, that we can drill down on that and make sure that we can get that correct.
I think what Dr. Coleman told us during the listening session today, and these are very cryptic notes, but there are nine different areas, there are nine bullet points of things that are currently happening and will continue to happen. And I think if you could refine that list, and I'd be happy to talk to Dr. Herzog about it as well, that I think you're very much on the right track.
Okay. That was, that was good.
Do you agree?
Yeah, the information we got in the listening session was really good, and I think, I mean, this has been our number one goal, or mine personally, and I think the board as a whole's number one goal and objective, certainly since we got elected two and a half years ago, because we know if this doesn't go, the district doesn't go, and it's our moral obligation to make sure that as many kids are succeeding in literacy and math as possible. And when we, we've said since we've put these different measures in place, that we all want to be held accountable. So when, you know, a little bit of an alarm goes off, or even eternally in public meetings saying, you know, there's some gaps, it's our obligation to make sure that we're going to fill those gaps, you know, as fast as we can, and we're going to do everything that we can to put us on the course that we need, that all the kids need to be on and that our community needs to be on, because these test scores are urgent, you know? I mean, it doesn't tell everything, but I can certainly tell you that we live in a very competitive area, and that families often talk about where are their kids going to go to? I mean, my kid's playing volleyball or doing whatever with whoever, and these parents are, they monitor on a regular basis what district is doing what and how they're performing and whatnot, and we have an obligation, you know, for our community and for our kids to do everything that we can to make sure that these numbers are on the right track. So, yeah, I mean, I've thought about this, this issue, or since the first day I got on this board and before then, and when us board members are together, I mean, the number one thing we will talk about is, hey, how do you think we're doing with this? We all are, we hope really well, you know what I mean? And it's a personal thing for us that, and it's a personal thing for the community, because there's not a million things that this community agrees on, and believe me, I hear all kinds of different things in this community, and there's a lot of different belief systems, but universally, they want us to succeed in teaching more kids how to read and write. They want us, everyone wants us to be successful in that. So it's a tremendous opportunity, but, you know, I think the message is, I like what I'm hearing, but, you know, we need to make sure that it happens, and we are going to make sure that it happens. I can, I'm sure of that. So, those are my thoughts. Thanks.
Can I recap?
Absolutely.
Again, and this is purely out of clarity. We're leaning into this, we take it seriously, we've got actions underway, we just, I just want to make sure that we're clear. So I'm hearing that we'll have action plans around suspensions, literacy, and math, that we'll put that together, the who, what, and when. The scope of those actions will be for the second, what's happening in the second semester of this school year, we'll bring those plans initially to the January education meeting, committee meeting, and then bring them to the board at the second meeting in January.
That sounds great.
Are we all on the same page on that?
I would also include the DEI plan that Mr. Miller presented to the board, where he talks about training at the school level and involving the community in the training, and the schools coming up with plans. I think we need to see timelines for those action plans of who, what, and when is going to make those things happen.
Yeah, okay. So suspensions, literacy, math, and then DEI plan as an action plan.
And I'm okay with the action plans going out three years, but I want to start in this semester, what are we going to do?
So in January.
In January, okay. I can roll it back.
This is really important.
Okay.
Because, and we also are in full speed, like with our staff right now, with kids, that we know we need that support. So, I just want to make sure, scope-wise, are we good with second semester? Do you want any more than that?
I don't care to go any further than that right now, because we may, it may all change after second semester, and maybe we're going to see some most wonderful results. I mean, I don't think we can micromanage you, I think it's important for the board to understand that there is a plan, and to see the plan and know that you're doing it, but I don't want to micromanage you, I don't think that's our board responsibility either. That doesn't give you the time and the resources to do what you should be doing to make the difference you need to make. That would be my opinion.
Okay.
Second semester is fine.
Okay. All right. I appreciate your clarity. Thank you.
Thanks for asking.
All right. Everyone good?
Yes.
Consent agenda for the consent agenda, board, and first background material on each agenda was discussed previous meeting, but the act on one vote without discussion of a board member wants to discuss the item, we pulled out the consent agenda and voted on separately.
So moved.
Second.
Herzog and Thalagi. I'm calling it.
Please call the roll.
Kearns.
Aye.
Thalagi.
Aye.
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 Carolyn.
Aye.
Aye.
Resolution carries.
And now we have an individually considered resolution, stop-loss carrier contract.
It would be Mr. Nihans.
Mr. Nihans. Is there a motion, second, so we can discuss?
Moved.
Thalagi.
Second.
Discussion.
Who's second?
Me.
So every year about this time, we have to go through in a self-insured plan, we go through and we appoint a stop-loss carrier. We, the recommendation is to, our current stop-loss carrier is QBE, they had submitted two options, the recommendation is going with option two of theirs, which is a lower premium. It does cause the aggregate, or the stop-loss to, threshold to go up, so currently we carry $150,000 of stop-loss. We would raise that to $175,000, the premium comes down. The difference between what we'd expect in extra liability and the difference in premium is about a $200,000 savings for the district. Again, at this point, we're still young in our self-insuring world, so it would be the recommendation to stay with our current stop-loss carrier and make that little change within the premium. Are there any questions on this at all?
Call for the vote.
Thalagi.
Aye.
Ray.
Aye.
Wyman. Carolyn. Whit.
Aye.
Kearns. Resolution carries.
Thank you. Any future agenda items?
Besides the.
For the list that Dr. Davis has, yes.
The one that we have with four parts.
Yes. Any announcements?
Hi. Thalagi. Yes, I have one. So as I mentioned earlier, I went to the Wisconsin's School Counselors' Convention, and I just want to celebrate that our very own Lakeside School Counselor, Jennifer Labinski, was awarded the Equity and Action Award at that event. That was very exciting, so also thank you to the principal there, Amy Ashton, for nominating her. And I also, one of the sectionals I attended was about suspensions. I noticed often at the school board convention, I go to a lot of things on mental health because of my school counseling background, and then here I was at the school counseling one, going to the suspension sectional because of my role on the school board. But it was recommended, one of the things that, at the end, that was recommended as a solution was to have an abeyance program, and I just sat there and thought. An abeyance program, which is what we implemented. So that was just exciting to see, that we are already on the path to the recommended steps for helping with school suspensions. I just wanted to make those two comments. Thank you.
Any others? Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn? So moved, moved to adjourn.
We've got Carolyn and.
Second by Ray.
I stopped talking.
Second by Ray.
Call the roll.
Ray.
Aye.
Wyman. Aye.
Whit. Aye. Herzog.
Aye.
Aye.
Thalagi.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.
Thank you, board, for all of your thoughtful comments tonight.